I'd like to call the July 23, 2025, meeting to order. It's 5:00 PM. That clock's a couple of seconds off, so that's why I called it to order right now. If we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We have additions, deletions, substitutions. Caitlin, do you have any?
Yes.
No, Mayor.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Hang on, DeeDee, and I'll get to you, okay? Go ahead, Caitlin.
No, Mayor.
All right. And just so everybody knows, I want to just mention that DeeDee is on Zoom, so she is participating in the meeting as she is voting today, but she is on Zoom. So if you hear this voice coming through. John, DeeDee, it doesn't matter who goes first. DeeDee, you want to go first?
I have additions or substitutions to bring up.
Right, I think she does, too. DeeDee, do you have an addition, substitutions, or deletions?
Sure, I'd just like to say, for the record, I had a family emergency, so I am up in New York managing that, and that's why I'm coming in remote. So I just want to have that on the record. As far as, I'd like to pull two items from the consent agenda and put them somewhere else in the regular agenda, and that would be the rules and procedures, rules of procedure and council protocols, and the seacoast utility item. Thank you, that's all. And please just let me, for administrative purposes, know how you would like me. If you want to call on me, and I'll just wait till the end, or if I raise hand feature, tell me how you'd want to.
Yeah, I think what I'll do is go through the sitting council, and then I'll go ahead and call on you, and then you know what to expect. Is that okay, DeeDee?
That's absolutely fine, thank you.
Okay, and then for three and four, let's go ahead and move them after 12. And if for some reason we're not getting to them, we can move them up if we need to. Unless they're lengthy, are they lengthy, DeeDee?
No, just some questions, there's some unanswered questions, and in the rules document, some inconsistencies I noticed that I would like brought to light, that's all.
Okay, and then I would like to move item number nine, which is the annual garbage assessment collection. We have Mr. Jeff Saban here, and I'd like to just move that before number eight, only because I think eight is going to take a while, and that way we don't have to hold Mr. Saban up. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Great. Any other additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Yes, Mayor. Before we get to that, I just don't see Councilmember Halpern on the Zoom here as a face, is that correct?
Do you want me?
There you are.
I'm in a hotel, and I don't look so good, so. Do you want to look at me?
Well, I couldn't quite make out some of the things you were saying, just your voice was a little. The volume was down a little bit, but it's easier to see when we see your face, you can kind of, you know, read your lips to go along with it, so that's nice.
If you'd prefer that I use the video, I will.
And we don't have a rule on that, I don't think, so it's up to council. You know, John would like it, I, it doesn't matter to me. Anybody else?
Doesn't matter.
DeeDee, maybe when you're talking, you can come in? That way John can hear, you know, see your lips.
No.
Listen to you, DeeDee.
I have a blank screen, though.
Okay, so we need to fix John's screen.
So, I don't.
Now he can't see you at all.
So hard to fix this.
Well, then, we're going to fix John's screen, and then we can go ahead and get started.
Want me to share with you?
Well, Mayor, while Caitlin's working on the screen here, I have two requests.
Okay.
One, I would like to add item for discussion of our town attorney situation.
And we can.
Based on the letter we got yesterday.
All right, and we can do that during council comments? Because we couldn't add it as an agenda item with that, you know, additional information. So I think council comments would be the place for that.
Okay, my second request is regarding council comments. I'd like to have a hard stop at 9:00 PM so that we have time for council comments. And that would leave 10 minutes for each council member to make comments, and an additional 10 minutes to discuss the legal situation on how to, where do we go from here? I tend to think the legal situation might take more than 10 minutes if we're not all in agreement. Things like this could take all night. So unless we want to leave it in limbo, maybe we want to have it earlier than council comment.
I'm fine starting at 9:00 PM, and we can, you know, place that agenda item on hold if we have to, or we can just move it up and then go into that agenda item. Is there any other comments from council on that? Mary Ann, do you have an opinion? Are you fine, starting council comments at 9:00?
Yes.
All right, Diana?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Is that it? All right, now we're for comments from the town manager, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite Planning Director Dabala up to the microphone just to briefly relate communication we received from Palm Beach Gardens and to request council direction on how to proceed. It should be noted that while we're asking for council direction to proceed, there's a follow-on conversation that will also be had on the same topic of annexation. That is not scheduled for this evening, per se, in any depth, but we certainly want to get the direction tonight on how to proceed with the pending requests that Mr. Dabala will speak to. Thank you.
Good evening, council. So, late afternoon yesterday, staff sent a memorandum regarding a proposed annexation by Palm Beach Gardens on a property that is currently located in the town's future annexation map. Staff at this time is asking council if you would want us to draft a letter of opposition to both Palm Beach County and Palm Beach Gardens, and have that sent to them, so that way it could be part of their records when it goes through their procedure.
All right, I'll start with that. I think we should object to the Palm Beach Garden annexation because this was a part of, like you said, part of our future annexation map. And that's usually agreed upon with a handshake, right? And everybody agreed to that annexation map. And when you find other municipalities coming in and inching away at some of these annexed areas that, you know, we had a handshake on, I think to do that now, we can always discuss it, add an agenda, and really go into detail whether that's something we're interested in. But for now, you know, that's a month away, and I would suggest we go ahead and send a letter. John?
Well, first of all, I'd like to have verification that the agreement is a handshake and not a formalized agreement.
It is not a formalized agreement. Staff could not find anything that was formalized. The map that we found was from the early 2000s, and it always included that, that part of it. Lynn, if you want to jump in on that.
Those, there have been issues, conflicts with the annexation areas for years between Juno Beach, Palm Beach Gardens, North Palm Beach. They were never actually agreed upon. Everyone just kept what they had in their comp plan as far as future annexation.
Lynn, are you saying there's no agreement for that annexation? Because I was under the impression it was a formalized agreement, there was a formalized map that was adopted in some way, shape, or form.
Let me, may I just interject something real quick that may also require your feedback on, because I'm not sure what current Florida law is. But when we adopt our comp plan, do we have to get concurrence or at least provide opportunity for review to adjacent communities? And if they do not comment, they have actively chosen to not dispute anything in our comp plan or not raise an objection to anything with mutual interest. So that concurrency is designed and intended to provide adjacent communities the opportunity to say, "Hang on a second, Juno Beach," or "Hang on a second," whichever other community. "We see what you're proposing in your comp plan, but here's our concern or objection." Not that we have to navigate that actively, but they certainly, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, have opportunity to comment, and to our knowledge, we don't have any comment from Palm Beach Gardens or anyone else opposing our annexation map when we went through that concurrency process with adoption of the last comp plan. But I'm welcome and open to any correction of my understanding of how that process works in Florida. That's my experience in other jurisdictions.
I believe that's correct, but that doesn't mean that they cannot have. If Palm Beach Gardens was to put the same area in their map, then it would have been our responsibility to do the same thing, which doesn't mean that there would be a disagreement between municipalities, and both of them could call the same area, which.
Correct. My only point being, you know, to this question of did Palm Beach Gardens ever agree to it? While there may not be a written agreement, there is concurrency through the comp plan process whereby they have an opportunity to object if they're interested in doing so.
I can almost guarantee there's a written agreement to it. These things just don't go on a handshake. Just because the staff can't find it doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So I would, I would bet my last dollar that there's, that, you know, there's memorandums, there's meetings, there's preliminary maps about annexation areas. It's like a big thing. It's not, "Oh, by the way, we're going to shake hands, and this is our area, this is your area." This affects people's lives that have properties in those areas. They, you know, they weighed in on these things, too. So I'm sure there's a formalized something somewhere, but I am against sending a letter. And the reasons are, these things need to be, I believe, they need to be handled between us and our manager and their town manager, and say, "What the hell?" You know, before we spout off and send a formalized letter, a phone call is the way to go and say, "What are you doing? What are you doing poaching our area? Do you want us to do that to you?" I mean, that's the kind of feedback it starts with. If it escalates, yeah, we'll send a formalized nasty letter, but not to start. That's not how you treat your neighbors on something where you have an issue like this.
I think that this is the way it's been handled in the past.
I can speak to that. So the way that staff found out about this was that one of their planners actually called our planner to give more of a professional courtesy, "This is happening, we're moving forward with this." Subsequent to that, they did prepare a memorandum, and they're going to discuss it in their interior, internal staff, and eventually it comes up, right? But it is part of their discussion. Normally, yes, it would be a staff, this, staff would look at that, and we would provide a letter of opposition because it is in the town's future annexation map. So right there, that normally gives us the right to at least send a notice, letter, a phone call, whatever the case may be. But in this case, we're asking you, since we did send out that email, so that way you are all aware in case you were to get a phone call or an email or whatever, whatever the case may be.
And John, I don't think this is a nasty letter. I think this is just, we're interested, we're not, you know, if you're thinking about annexing it, we might be interested in annexing it. So we're just putting our hands up and saying, "Hey, you know, this was on our future annexation map, and we might be interested in it." That's all we're doing, is showing them. So it's nothing, you know, we still have, I don't know if they did that to us.
If my neighbors next door sent me a letter, I'd be insulted.
Did they?
If he has a problem with my fence or my oak tree or whatever, I would expect he'd knock on my door and say, "John, what about this fence?"
Did they do that to us when they wanted to annex all these other areas? Frank, can you answer that? They never, they never notified us.
They did not, and that's.
They did not.
And this is exactly what happened when they tried to, like, as you mentioned, annexed the 1,300 and something acres. There was no discussion with staff, and it was areas that were in our future annexation map as well. So, you know, we looked at it, what, two years ago or whenever that happened?
About a year and a half ago, yeah.
Year and a half ago.
Could you just answer again, Lynn or Frank? Is there any document that you know of?
I don't believe so. And to answer the manager's concern, yeah, you can have input when your neighbor adopts a complaint amendment, but they can go ahead and adopt it anyway. So even if Palm Beach Gardens said, "Hey, Juno Beach, we want that area as well," it doesn't mean anything, we can still go ahead and include it in our future annexation area. I don't know, I will tell you that North Palm Beach and Palm Beach Gardens have a lot of conflicts. When Karen Marcus was the commissioner, she attempted to get everyone together, resolve them. We had a handshake agreement that Palm Beach Gardens then reneged on and decided they didn't want to move forward with. So I don't think there's any agreement out there. I could be wrong, but I know as far as North Palm and Palm Beach Gardens are concerned, they never came to any agreement, and we still have probably three or four areas of conflict.
And again, we're not making the decision to annex anything. We'd have to put it on the agenda. Go ahead, Diana.
I would ask that the email and the letter be put into the record for this meeting, so it's clear what we're talking about. And I'm not opposed to a phone call and sending a letter.
Mary Ann?
Well, I just would like to know if we show our intent, that we are also interested. Who makes the decision ultimately? Is it the people who live there? Is it a referendum? Do they all have to agree, or just like the majority? You know, I just heard about that annexation one day ago, so.
Frank, go ahead, because I know that's a building, a commercial building.
Right, so we're talking about one property, one property owner, and the communication that we received and what we saw is a voluntary annexation into Palm Beach Gardens. So the property owner is saying, "Yes, we want to come into Palm Beach Gardens," but maybe they don't know that, "Hey, I can also come into Juno Beach and, you know, weigh the pros and cons." No, it's the property to the south.
Designed.
Right, where you have the FedEx, the property to the south.
South of there.
Immediately south of that. It's a very small building, it's 12010 US Highway 1.
Yeah, Palm Beach Gardens annexed that plaza that where.
Mr. Ferrera owns.
Right, that Mr. Ferrera owns, that's redeveloped, so it's the next one up. So Juno Beach now could not annex, we don't have contiguity with that parcel right now.
I believe we do.
Or do we?
I believe we do because of Captain's Key. There's a canal.
We could.
Right, there's a canal there, so as long as the county and the state say, "Hey, the canal, it's okay to be in the middle of," then we could have a connectivity.
Well, the other problem is you might be creating an enclave, because then you're going around, and then what's on the other side?
Definitely worth the discussion, but the staff looked at it. We thought it was okay based on the state statute and Palm Beach County's regulations that were part of that memorandum.
All right, so Mary Ann, you're not opposed to a letter? And it's not a bad idea to give them a quick call and just say.
Because I looked at the map, and it makes sense that these parcels would go to Juno Beach because they are in a location where they really, you know, are very easily accessed by Juno Beach and around them, so I would say yes.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. DeeDee?
Yes, hi. One of my questions was going to be about the contiguity. Is it, I didn't have a good chance to look at the map. Is it contiguous to any Juno Beach properties? Are you saying it's contiguous to Captain's Key after a canal?
There's a small, very small canal, yes.
I'm in favor of sending a letter. I think in the past, isn't that what we did? Or Joe or the town manager at the time would reach out to the community or the property owner and, you know, introduce the topic. I think that's perfectly fine, and let them decide whether they want to come to Juno or Palm Beach Gardens. That's all, thank you.
We need to vote, just consensus.
At a consensus, Caitlin, to go ahead and do this. All right, and to John's point, you know, maybe make a phone call ahead of time. And that will hopefully make John feel better, too, that we're connecting with Palm Beach Gardens. All right, any other comments? Rob?
No, that's it, thank you, Mayor.
All right, comments from the town attorney?
I did send out an email with the legislative summary, which took way longer this year because the session went way longer. So it's really for informational purposes. If you have any specific questions, you can call me, email me, and I'd be happy to give you specifics. So that was, that's very much a general overview. But again, there are some things that we're going to have to address, the town's going to have to address. There are going to be some amendments to the Live Local ordinance. We're going to have to figure out a new platting, because now platting is administrative. So there are some things that we're going to have to do, but again, if you have any questions, reach out. Thank you.
All right, and that might be something, council, we would want to put on an agenda item for the next month or the, probably the next month. We can talk about that during council comments as well. And staff comments? None?
No, Mayor.
All right, we're to comments from the public.
I have Aldo Rovir on Zoom. Aldo, your three minutes for public comment starts now. I don't think he's connecting.
I think he's in Italy, right?
I believe so, still there, yes. We'll move on to Steen Erickson. Give me just a moment.
There I am, I'm on. Did you connect with him?
Should be. Hit the button right in front?
There you go. You on? Okay, Steen Erickson, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. I just wanted to, for Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, I'm the commander of the Honor Guard and Pipes and Drums. I just wanted to introduce you to what the Honor Guard and Pipes and Drums really does. And I have some annual reports from 2024 that I'm going to give to Caitlin, and she will hand them out to you. But it's just that you know that if you have something special going on, having the Honor Guard with the colors and the pipes and drums there, it just adds a little bit of, just elevates the celebration a little bit, if you want to say it that way. So if you look at this, when you have a moment, just see all the things that we do for veterans, for communities, for civic associations. That's what I think, of course, our main focus is funerals and rendering honors to fallen firefighters. But nonetheless, there's a lot of other things that you, that we do that you may be interested in having us be a part of if you happen to have a grand opening or some sort of special ceremony that you would like, the pipes and drums there. If you like the pipes, the bagpipes, I mean, that, if you've heard them before, that just adds a whole lot of different feeling to the whole ceremony. So anyway, I just wanted to, just real quickly, introduce you to what we do. When I was talking to the mayor earlier, just a few minutes ago, she said, "I had no idea that you did that." So that's, so I'm glad that I am doing this because a lot of people don't realize what the Honor Guard and Pipes and Drums role really is in representing Palm Beach County Fire Rescue out to the public. So we do a lot of things for the municipalities that we serve and for civic associations as well. So thank you for your time, that was it, short and sweet.
Thank you, Steen.
I believe Aldo is on now. Aldo, your three minutes for public comment starts now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I apologize. We do have some technical difficulties here. But anyway, let me just say this. I'm addressing this basically to the town council and the council members and the staff and the mayor. As you're aware, we received a formal request from the Executive Office of the Governor dated July 11, requiring submission of detailed financial operational data under the Governor's Department of Government Efficiency, or DOGE initiative, created by Executive Order 2544. This initiative, supported by Senate Bill 2502, now gives the governor legal authority to review and assess the financial records, data systems, and budget allocations of all local governments across Florida. For the town of Juno Beach, because of our total revenues fall below 10 million, the requirement is more limited. We're only being asked to submit data for fiscal year '23 and '24, and only for the 10 largest revenue sources. However, we must provide very specific details. Revenue amounts, sources such as property taxes, fees, and grants, how those revenues are allocated across 60 expenditure subcategories, including law enforcement, sewer, parks, legal counsel, debt service, reserves, and more. Why does this matter? Although the request is presented as a data collection effort, is a part of a larger trend in the federal setting DOGE-style reviews, which have led to targeted criticism of low-efficiency programs, recommendations to consolidate or privatize services, and pressure to reduce staff levels or delay capital spending. If this initiative follows the path in Florida, towns like ours, particularly the lean budgets and high resident service expectations, could face outside pressure to consolidate or reduce perceived duplicative services, rethink police, public works, or administrative staffing levels, or limit spending in areas not aligned with the state's efficiency benchmarks. Let me be clear, no cuts are mandated at this time, but the detailed expenditure level data we submit may feed into future policy recommendations or mandates, especially if trends are identified across small municipalities. If this initiative follows the same path as in towns like ours, particularly lean budgets, as I said, we must consolidate or reduce perceived duplicative services. There are no cuts are mandated yet at this time, but the detailed expenditure level data we submit will feed into those future policy recommendations or mandates, especially if they're identified. The recommendations I have is to ensure that this data is accurate and consistent to avoid misinterpretation and unfair comparisons. Highlight our fiscal discipline and service efficiency are small, often is, is often more efficient.
Aldo, you've got, Aldo, you've got about 10 seconds. If you could wrap it up, please. I gave you an extra 30 seconds, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Monitor future DOGE guidance or directive closely as initiatives may evolve from data collection policy efforts. So I, what I'm saying basically is this, too. You have an audit group that's now in hiatus. This is what they are supposed to look into, processes and procedures.
All right.
I would suggest you bring them in.
Thank you so much, Aldo.
And bossa?
I am bossa, 765 Hibiscus Avenue. Lynn, I read your memo and memorandum about Senate Bill 180, but in that memorandum, you reference 683, House Bill 683, regarding turf, astroturf. Do you, can you tell us about this? It's a, you can't, you know, it prohibits, it prohibits towns from being restrictive on it. And how will that affect our codes that are limiting the use of astroturf?
So it's.
Synthetic turf.
It's a state preemption. It applies only, I believe, to residential, to family. So the state is going to come up with the rules as to where they can be, or if it could be installed, and then the permeability rates and all these other things, the disposal. Many municipalities did enact pretty comprehensive ordinances regulating turf. We did not, so we, we don't really have much in our code that addresses it, but.
Oh, I thought we did.
No, we do not.
Okay.
So we have very little. I assume it just doesn't count towards the landscape open space, and Frank can correct me if I'm wrong. But, but people can use it in Juno Beach as long as it looks green, because that's the only amendment we made, is that it looks like real grass.
Okay, I remember a big discussion about the worms not being permeated.
Thank you, Ann.
Marshall Wolf? She deferred. Other comments received are for other items on the agenda.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second?
Second motion.
I'll conduct a roll call. Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Before we start the action items, I just want to mention that we're going to follow the same format moving forward in all meetings as we established several meetings ago. And that's if you want to speak, you can go ahead and turn your green light on, and I will call on you. I won't necessarily go in order, but I'll make sure I call on everyone. Also, as a reminder from our protocols, each council member will have three minutes to speak, and then a motion can be made and seconded, and more discussion can take place. The council is so inclined to move forward with discussion. And we'll go ahead and start with item number nine, which is the annual garbage assessment collection.
Lynn, did you want to read the order, or resolution title?
I don't have to.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. This hearing is being held to inform all single-family homeowners that the garbage assessment rate will increase by $9.36 for the upcoming year, bringing the total annual assessment to $260.52. At this time, I'm just requesting a motion from council to proceed with the assessment rate of $260.52.
Okay. And before we do that, Ken, do we have any public comments?
Not that I received for this item.
All right. I know we have Jeff Saban here. Jeff, do you want to say a few words?
Very briefly. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayors, and council and staff. For the record, Jeff Saban, WM, formerly Waste Management. But as you know, you're an exclusive franchise provider of solid waste and recyclable materials collection. This is the standard annual assessment. But I did want to kind of highlight a couple of things. As Caitlin mentioned, the increase is $9.36 per year, which is 78 cents per unit, per month. And this is applicable to single-family assessed homes on the net non-add valorem section of the tax roll. This also, because of your contract and the way it was structured in terms of the escalation language, the actual CPI applicable to this agreement, if it would be 100% and the trend lines support this, is about 4.93%. And that would be the water, sewer, trash index. But because this agreement, when it was negotiated, it was the town's position, they wanted to cap the amount at 3.75%. So your increase this year, even though the CPI went up almost 5%, and it's trending along those same lines, it looks like into the near future, was capped at 3.75%. So that, that saved residents a lot, obviously. We're proud to be your provider and continue to. And thank you for your time. Any questions?
Any questions for Jeff? Mary Ann?
No, I have no questions.
Okay. Diana?
The question that I have is the size of the trash cans. You know, I was wondering if all the communities got their needs met as far as the size of the large containers? And then is there any opportunities to increase recycling in some of our communities who don't have recycling right now?
Great question. And it's, it's come up a number of times since the implementation of the automated service, which really rolled out so smoothly. Many thanks to your residents and their acceptance of the new program and the way in which we were supported by you and your staff to roll the program out. The initial offering was, and we decided against the 96-gallon cart, which you see in the unincorporated areas, that is the largest mobile cart that we can collect. It was determined that we would kind of mirror what they did in Jupiter, and we'd assign a 64-gallon capacity cart for, for Juno Beach residents, which has worked out very well. In addition to that, we included the opportunity or option to add an additional cart for those that have larger families and may generate additional waste. They can request a second cart for a one-time purchase, but we'll pick it up for the same rate. So there's no additional fees or costs associated with it. Instead of issuing that larger cart, which we found some of the properties had limited storage space, more, more than we thought, honestly. We thought we did a really great job preliminarily of doing a total survey of the community. But we did found some smaller pockets that had smaller garages, in some cases, carports, that didn't have a lot of space to accommodate a larger cart. And, and hopefully that addressed that question, and then I can segue into recycling. We have had a number of requests, and to date, the agreement with the town of Juno Beach is an interlocal agreement with the Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County, who is the repository for all of the dual stream. I call it dual stream because there's still two bins that we collect with a rear loader, split body. Then we collect the co-mingled and the, and the fiber, and it goes into the truck, and it goes to the Solid Waste Authority's processing facility. Again, and it's a revenue share with each municipality throughout Palm Beach County. They do the processing, and then they share in the revenues. We have been, we, company and the industry has been trying to really convince to go to single stream, where we could issue a cart, and then people could divert even more of the waste into the recycling stream than they do now. So that really is the single-family home approach. It's dual stream, two bins, and they're 18-gallon bins, blue and yellow, one for each respective commodity. And for multifamily, the condominiums and larger townhouses, we call those multifamilies. We offer those also on mobile carts, and they're solid waste authority carts, are both blue and yellow. That particular program is, it's not mandatory. It's really because we, we treat it as open market. Because again, some of the properties are, are older, and they have less storage area where they can accommodate those carts and then have their residents access them. So, but we continue to encourage the multifamily and commercial businesses to expand upon their recycling efforts. It is open market, and we do charge for it because there is a cost of collection. But the offset of that is every pound of material that they're able to put in the recycling cart is not, they're not having to pay a disposal cost to the solid waste authority. So there is a financial, would you say, aspect of it that, that's beneficial. And also, it, it helps reduce the costs. And sustainability-wise, it reduces the amount of waste that has to be processed at the solid waste authority.
All right. Thank you, DeeDee.
Yes. Hi, Jeff.
Good evening.
Hi. We, council had received a comment from a resident, Howard Burkle, who was suggesting that we reduce, I'm going to say off-season or summer pickup to save money. Did the council read that email from him? It was something I hadn't thought of before. But Jeff, I'm just curious. Do you have any communities who reduce their trash pickup seasonally?
Single-family wise, no.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because, yes, ma'am, I meant. Because we, once we route it, it's a logistics issue. And we call those drive-bys. And if people are on vacation, or there are snowbirds, and they're not, and it's not occupied, we still have to send the truck down every street. So, and then in terms of, if I understood, the frequency, put the potential to go once a week pickup? Is that, was that the?
I guess that's what his point was. Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
We.
Just curious.
It's been our experience, and, and we've approached many of our public sector partners on that option to go to once a week. And the ones that are currently going twice a week have no interest in changing because of the odor. That once a week, keeping, even if you double-bag everything, trust, I, I live in an area and where it's once a week, and it's, and it's, it's my business. So, and it's very difficult, especially during the summertime. And during the winter is obviously the time, seasonality-wise, that's when our volumes increase because the population increases. So it really is a minimum of twice a week. In some instances, it's actually mandated by the Health Department. They have actual health guidelines that, that actually require twice-a-week pickup. In many instances, that's the case. So that would be kind of my response. I understand the seasonality. And the town benefits tremendously. I'm glad you brought that up because a great deal, the segment of the population in this town is, are occupants of multifamily properties. They can actually adjust the collection schedule based on their occupancy numbers because they're commercially serviced. Unlike single-family homes and multi that are curbside serviced, we still have to send a truck there at least twice a week for, for garbage, once a week for yard waste. And yard waste is the other thing. People say, well, I'm not here, but this is growing season. Not that it isn't year-round. But we get a tremendous amount. What we don't pick up in garbage, we're picking up in yard waste this time of year. It's really, really amazing. People do a lot of trimming and continue to maintain their properties beautifully. And to do that, they have to trim. Even though some have landscapers, there are others that like to do it themselves, and they put out a tremendous amount of volume. You can see our clamshell trucks traversing the town. So hopefully that answered your, your question, DeeDee. I hope it sufficiently addressed it.
Yes, thanks. And just one other question. Do you, or do you maintain a list of multifamily properties that don't currently recycle? And do you have a program where you would reach out to them? You know, promote the benefits of recycling and try to get them on board?
Yes, to the first question. We do have a list, obviously, of all of our multifamily properties that we service. And we have the actual, yeah, a profile of each one and whether they're participating in recycling. So yes, we do have that. And, and I can answer honestly, no, we haven't reached out to see if they, or would encourage them to participate in recycling program. But that's something that we can continue to discuss and promote, and through communication and education, see if we can get more participation in recycling in a town of Juno Beach. Make it.
I'd like to see that. Obviously, in a multifamily, people are paying their HOA dues, and there's a cost for the homeowners that they individually have to consider whether it's worth it. But I think promoting recycling is always a good thing. So that's all I have to.
All right. Thank you, DeeDee. If there's no other questions, or go ahead, John.
Thank you. Jeff, I have one question on the yard waste. How many times a week do we pick up yard waste?
One time per week. There's a caveat to that. And the only, the caveat is we pick up curbside once a week for anyone that sets out, they're bagged or trimming or anything like that. The, the yard waste, what we call bulk, that's yard waste regular. And then yard waste bulk is for the larger volumes, where they do a heavy cut, a heavy trim, and possibly pruning, where they'll have more than, let's say, the size of a, the, the size of a pile that a normal crew could actually physically handle. Then we call that in immediately. Well, we send the clamshell truck around. It's almost, it's like a regular routed vehicle. So we don't even have to call because they come through the town pretty regularly. So that's also once a week. So we pick up curbside yard waste regular, and that's what's in containers or bags, or however it's prepared. If it's neatly piled, we'll just pick it up. The larger piles are picked up by that, what we call the claw or clamshell truck. And that's also weekly. We also take care of bulk items as well. And those would be those larger items that don't fit into the cart, those normal, like ceiling fans, cabinetry, things like that, that don't fit. We also have a truck that, that collects that as well.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Can I get a motion?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed millage. No, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2508 adopting the non-add valorem assessment for garbage collection for single-family properties in the amount of $260.52 per unit for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
I second.
I'll conduct a roll call. Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jeff, for coming in. The next item is a bill, Senate Bill, impact of Senate Bill 180 and Appearance Review Harmony for Single Family Dwellings. Lynn, I'll let you go ahead and start, and then I'll do public comment.
Okay. I don't know how much detail, Mayor, you want me to go into. So I'll just try to keep it a little more high-level, and the memo speaks for itself. So back in May, the council provided, the majority of the council provided guidance for staff to move forward with certain amendments to the zoning code, basically regulating harmony through revisions to the base zoning is essentially, and then the implementation of a design book, pattern book. So then Senate Bill 180 comes along. And what Senate Bill 180 provides is that because the town of Juno Beach is located in Palm Beach County, and Palm Beach County was named in the disaster declaration for Hurricane Milton, the town may not and propose or adopt any moratorium on construction, reconstruction, or redevelopment of any property damaged by a hurricane, propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome amendments to its comprehensive plan or land development regulations, period, and propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome procedures concerning review, approval, or issuance of a site plan, development permit, or development order. So there are a number of elements of the direction provided back in May that now are not viable. Those are increasing the yard setbacks for the second story, increase, and imposing a second-story floor area limitation, and increasing the minimum landscape open space. Because on their face, those are more burdensome and restriction, restrictive. There was a recommendation to change how harmony is going to be compared, get rid of the 300-foot language, and then just say the same, just compare it with all the structures within the same contiguous zoning district. I don't think on its face, that is more burdensome or restrictive because the example I gave in the memo, sometimes it could actually work to the benefit of the property owner. And the example is those three houses on US-1, if you use those. Now, anything on Apollo and Diana, those would be included, and those would actually allow for larger structures. Senate Bill 180 doesn't preempt all the direction. The council could still remove architecture review for a single-family and two-family dwellings, remove appearance review for single-family dwellings other than what was stated, and revert back to staff review for approval-denial of single-family homes and the pattern book. That wouldn't be prohibited because essentially, it would either be voluntary or incentivized. So we do have a zoning in progress in place. But again, some of the elements of that zoning in progress aren't just not viable anymore. So what I did in the memo, I sort of outlined what our existing appearance review regulations are, harmony, the elements of harmony. Everyone's pretty familiar with that now, anyway. And so just analyze what the town's options are moving forward. I, you know, there's, there's a multitude of potential options, but I essentially came up with two. One, we could continue with the direction of, provided in May to the extent that it wasn't preempted, and just revert back to base zoning. Now, you revert back to base zoning, pretty simple. It will allow for larger structures. It will eliminate potential legal challenges because, again, it's going to allow for, you know, those old regulations have been in effect for years and years. And if you're taking out the harmony, it really, it's a very simple application. So then the second question is, could we continue with appearance review? Now, I know there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of, I don't know, I don't know the right word. But a lot of people are not happy with the Appearance Harmony Review regulations. And I think a lot of it arises out of the fact that they believe they're too subjective. And they are subjective. They were always intended to be subjective. Appearance review is subjective on its very face. is subjective on its very face. So, but the problem was, when we went to apply these criteria, there was objections that, well, we want, we want objective standards. You heard it from the planning and zoning board. You heard it from very various residents. So the planning staff, in an effort to be consistent in their application, came up with these tests. We all discussed that at the workshop, sort of on a way to make sure they're applied consistently and give a little more objective criteria. But I did go through the legal analysis. Just because an ordinance is subjective does not mean it's invalid. As long as you have criteria in the ordinance, we took some of our language from other municipalities. I don't know if any of it came directly from town of Palm Beach. It might have. But there is a case, a reported case out of that challenge, the town of Palm Beach is, they have that ARCOM, which is their architectural review committee. And one property owner who was denied the right to build what he wanted to build, did challenge their ordinance, saying it was vague, saying there was too much discretion. And the court rejected those challenges and said, no, there's criteria. So it's, and the fact that something's subjective doesn't mean it's necessarily invalid, as long as there are criteria that could be applied. There's another case coming out of Delray Beach that sort of says the same kind of thing. Theirs was a conditional use ordinance, but again, it was subjective criteria. The court said, well, that, that doesn't render it invalid on its face. Now, the negative is, will, will we face legal challenges if we continue to apply appearance review? Probably. There are a number of claims. There's, there's a void for vagueness claim, which is essentially a due process claim. And this has sort of been discussed, that people don't know what they could build. And if you don't have these objective standards, how are people to know, you know, what they can or can't build? The Burt Harris issue is still lurking out there. You know, if we limit the size smaller than what's already out there, you know, that's, that was the base of my opinion way back when. I said, well, yeah, we can limit the size, but if we're limiting it to smaller, to sizes smaller than what's already constructed, I think, you know, it's likely we will get a Burt Harris claim challenge. So what's interesting about the town, I'm going to roll back to the town of Palm Beach case again. That was a district court decision. Then it went up to the 11th Circuit, which is the Federal Court of Appeals. And they upheld the lower court's decision, but they kind of said, well, yeah, you know, it's fine, it's subjective. But they also noted that what helps in the application of these ordinances is that their ARCOM is, consists of people with background and experience in architecture, and, you know, landscaping, and land planning. And so these are people who are experienced in the field. And they also noted that there was an appeal. So if somebody wasn't happy with how ARCOM applied those criteria to their particular application, they could apply to the town commission. The town commission would ultimately have the final decision. So my recommendation was, either we go back to base zoning, and either, and that could have staff review, and we can implement those other elements of what was recommended back in May, or we keep the appearance review. But my recommendation is, if we keep appearance review, we should have a real design review board with people who have experience in the area. It won't get us back to the building design elements, because we didn't have it in place prior to the date that we needed to have it in place. But moving forward, I think it would assist in fending off potential challenges. And then there should be some sort of appeal to the town council. Now, if it's a board review, you can apply, you can enact a provision that essentially allows someone to appeal to the town council. If it becomes a staff review, well, any decision by staff regarding the interpretation of the zoning code can always be appealed to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, which in Juneau Beach is the town council. So you already have a built-in appellate mechanism if it's a staff review. So that's the overview. You have questions? I'd be happy to answer them, but that's it for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lynn. Caitlin, do we have a public comment?
Yes, Mayor, John Staluto.
John Staluto, 401 Sunset Way, Juneau Beach. Well, you all know, I've been here for almost 40 years. And our base zoning has worked fine for us. People have built houses, and everything's worked out. Now, all of a sudden, you want to take 25% of my square footage that I could build, and I'm going to lose money, because now my property isn't worth as much. I didn't ask for this. My neighbors did not ask for this. I don't know who asked for this. But when I went around to get the petition signed, I talked to my neighbors. And all my neighbors were in agreement. They don't want to lose square footage. They don't want to lose property value. I bought what I bought, and I want what I want. I'm not asking for more. I'm not asking for a variance or extra. I want the original square footage I bought, and the rules that I bought under. You know, I don't know why you're doing this. There's only about 314 houses or lots that this applies to, out of the whole town. So it's like 4,000 people against 300 people. It's just not fair. You guys are bullying us. And most of us that live in the older houses that haven't been touched is because we are older, we don't have the, the, the monies to build up right now, but maybe we will. But I want what I, what I originally had. You're picking on seniors, mostly senior people, that are in the most vulnerable part of their life. But I just feel that this is ridiculous. It's put us through so much stress. It's put regular people on edge. Most people don't know what's going on. And what's, when I went and explained to them what's going on, they gladly signed. We had almost 200 people, and we stopped getting signatures, only because, you know, we didn't know what was going to happen with Senate Bill 180 and all that. So we stopped. But otherwise, I would have went door-to-door in 90-degree weather, like I've done before on other issues, when we had to try to get the sewers in and things like that. But this is just ridiculous. And, and like I say, I didn't ask for it. Nobody asked. And I'm just asking for my property rights, the way I bought. And you want to break it down simple? I bought a bag of apples. There were 12 apples. Now you want two of them back, and you, the bag of 10 is going to cost me more money. Okay? It's very simple. You are taking from me, and you are taking from those 314 people that own those houses, which is ridiculous. And you're subjecting them to turn around and sue the town. And the town works for us. You work for me, Lynn. You should be advising the council not to waste my money and the other citizens' money on these lawsuits that are going to come up. But please, go back to base zoning. Leave me alone. Leave the other people alone. Everybody else got to build up the way they want it. Allow me to build up in the creative way that keeps Juneau Beach creative and eclectic, not like the bluffs or anywhere else. Thank you.
Larry Soarsby.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Larry Soarsby, and I'm asking you to repeal ordinance 780 and restore the harmony codes enacted in 1992, codes that guided Juneau Beach with fairness, simplicity, and certainty for over three decades. Ordinance 780 was not properly understood when it passed. Many council members believed they were simply defining the word harmony. They didn't realize they were drastically changing what single-family homeowners could build and stripping away longstanding property rights. They didn't foresee the confusion, the drop in property values, or the legal exposure now facing our town. And because council didn't understand it, guess what? Neither did the public. Residents were deprived of the chance to make meaningful comments that could have changed the vote. Don't just take my word for it. Review the meeting recordings. The 1992 harmony codes treated all homeowners equally, provided clear standards, and protected property rights while preserving our town's character. Ordinance 780 dismantles that. It replaces objective rules with vague discretionary decisions by town staff and the planning and zoning board without any codified metrics to ensure fairness. It's impossible to enforce this subjectivity. Neither existing or future homeowners know what they can build on their property. Even staff is paralyzed, unable to offer consistent guidance or confidently approved plans. This uncertainty doesn't just frustrate, it creates large legal risk. Without clear standards, every decision is vulnerable to challenge. Defending those lawsuits will cost the town financially and reputationally. This isn't speculation, it's a real liability. Two council members who supported 780 originally, Ms. Hasta and Ms. Wheeler, now want it repealed. Another has admitted she didn't understand what she was voting for. That speaks volumes. Over 170 residents have signed a petition asking you to rescind ordinance 780. Repealing it isn't a step backwards, it's a return to fairness, clarity, and legal stability. Let's restore the 1992 harmony codes. Let's restore trust, and let's protect the rights and financial security of every homeowner in Juneau Beach. Thank you.
Charlotte Parker, representing Boss Lady Holdings.
Hello.
Charlotte, can you give your name and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Charlotte Parker. I reside at 441 North Juneau Lane in Juneau Beach.
Thank you.
I am representing Boss Lady Holdings, who actually has two properties in their name. They also have an additional property. So this, I'm representing someone that has three properties. Okay? The building code established for Juneau Beach residents for over 30 years, which, by the way, Juneau Beach is a non-HOA community. They were non-subjective, simple guidelines preserved, preserving homeowners' rights as long as the following objectives criteria were met. Building height limits, front, rear, and side setbacks, lot parking and open space. These site plan requirements have served Juneau Beach well. Problems occurred when owners and builders have abused the system by requesting and sometimes given variances. New appearance codes being proposed seem to emphasize preventing supersizing, overdevelopment, and takeover of Juneau Beach by developers. Unfortunately, much of the discussion appears to center around restricting homeowners' rights granted by the previous codes, which served our community for over 35 years. These new codes mandate specific architectural design requirements and total control of floor area. The required setbacks of a minimum of five feet on all sides of the second story seem excessively stringent for a non-HOA community. This proposed mandate increases the cost of construction, interferes with the homeowner's property rights, decreases property values when potential buyers are informed of these restrictions, exposes the town to litigation, which, by the way, is already in process. The reviews of the single-family homes over the past two years have all been approved. Those included two- and three-story homes under objective setbacks and height codes governing and serving our community for decades. These homes would not have been approved under codes being proposed. I believe the TRCPC has valuable insight and recommendations for our community concerning the remaining commercial sites, Plaza Lemare, Juno Plaza, Fran Murphy, Future Ocean Development.
You have 30 seconds.
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Future, almost done. Where am I? Future Oceanfront redevelopment, pedestrian safety and traffic control. There should be limited stringent and burdensome regulation and controlled by town planners and council of individual homeowners' rights.
Thank you.
Charlotte Parker, representing South.
I figured I was next. Okay. I'm real quick and easy. I am a Juneau Beach resident. I do not own the property that I currently reside in. I have owned property in Juneau Beach. I am also a Realtor. And I find Juneau Beach to be, gosh, a special, wonderful place in my heart. And I'm going to say that Juneau Beach has site plan requirements, which has served the town well. I feel the issue, again, is not the current requirements, but the attempt by some, which we all know, have tried to expand the limits and push the envelope. But they're not developers. We're talking, when we say developers, we're talking about, like, you know, coming in and having a development like Coretta, like the Pool T one, like, you know, Ocean One. Those are developers. But I, and I will say, one of the slideshow photos that you have has to be with a house on Apollo, which, when I first drove by, I thought it was like a fishbowl. I was going to be in the backyard, and I'm going to be inundated by everyone else around me. No. I walked in there, and I thought, oh, you know what? He has, has a, gosh, what? He has foliage. Now, if you want to get rid of everything, then put a reek of palms. And he still has enough, enough of, you know, his, well, I don't know if it's a he or she, but they have enough ability to go ahead and make their home, so it's not like they're in pace. Now, I just, like, went off the side. Okay. Now, I'm going to say, when people are trying to push the envelope and trying to expand and get the max of what they want, I believe that what we're asking is, why should a few, why should many pay the price for a few? The proposal by staff regarding the second story with the additional setbacks on all five feet is a mandate, and definitely is not subjective. I believe it actually violates SB 180 by making it more stringent and burdensome. The recommendations found on page 13, bullet points 3, 5, and 6. Now, when I say page 13, I'm talking about this right here, where, where it shows, one, amend the code to remove architectural review, two, create a zoning progress, ZIP, amend the code. Those are what I'm speaking about. So it's page 13 in what we had sent out for the agenda. That they are not clarifying, the recommendations found on page 13, bullet points 3, 5, and 6, are not clarifying or further defining harmony review, but adding additional regulations for property owners. By mandating the additional five-feet setbacks on all sides of a second story truly limits what architectural styles you can build. And it also increases the cost of building. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlotte.
Ann Bassa?
Ann Bassa, 765 Hibiscus Avenue. Once again, I agree with everyone who's stood up here this evening. This 780 is an unfair, burdensome ordinance. It is taking away property rights. It is taking away, when these, it's taking away value, a lot of value. I've done basically an appraisal. We, I used one piece of property and applied the setbacks, the required setbacks, and so forth, and what could be done to that property. And it would, depending on how, how they applied it, you're, we've losing value up to 40%. I am a registered appraiser. So I also went through on Lynn's memo, a lot of these cases that he cited on, to look into what us being sued or not being sued. Anyway, many of them, like the one you referred to in Palm Beach, was that Burns versus the town of Palm Beach, was an amendment one violation. The man was building an ultra-modern house, which said it was his right, it was his right of expression. It had nothing to do with his property rights or amendment, or the 14th Amendment. Property rights are so valuable to residents that, again, they're in the Constitution under the Fifth, and were protected under two amendments of the Constitution. Who does this council think they are, that they can strip residents of our property rights with willy-nilly, willy-nilly ordinances, and no, with no real teeth to them? We're going into the courtroom if we continue this route.
Those are all the comments I received for this item.
Okay. We have a council discussion, please. Oh. Did you, can she sign a card still? Yeah, it's fine. It's for this item, then, right? Okay.
I didn't sign it either.
Yeah, go ahead. If you. Mit Marsha, can you get up, say, state your name and your address?
Portent Sunrise Way. I just wanted to continue to support the prior speakers, that number one, 780 was never codified, but it's so confusing. It's ridiculous. And Lynn, I thank you for your service, but you've missed, in my opinion, I think your heart's in the right place. The bigger picture is the money. I have the signatures of, I think, at least all but two on my street, that have been talking to attorneys from the beginning, because they don't understand why the house on the corner should be two to three times more valuable than theirs because of this 780. We love that big house. It's made all of our houses more valuable. But I think you're missing Lucas versus South Carolina Coastal. I also did not find any of your references really valid for what we're doing. But what we came up with is that it would be a loss to the town of somewhere between 125 and 150 million. Lucas versus South Carolina Coastal says that if there's a governmental taking, and it would be a governmental and it would be a governmental taking-- that body has to make the other people whole, which would be the residents of the Ridge. Some people are running all over town, talking to people that live in other areas. How do you feel about what the Ridge should do? The Ridge has an investment in the Ridge. It is our property. We are not part of an HOA. We don't want to be part of an HOA. And we don't want, from the year 2025 on, all of the new houses to look like wedding cakes. It's absurd that it's gotten this far. Everybody's upset. They're emotionally disturbed. And I feel like you guys haven't accomplished anything. All you're doing is debating something based on a foundational lie. The 300 feet is a foundational lie made up by Diana Davis that we can find nowhere in any municipalities applying residential to residential. It's only applying to commercial industrial businesses within 300 feet of a residential. It's based on a foundational lie, which is why it doesn't work. The metrics don't work. Nothing adds up. It's not clear to anybody. So I want to say thank you for helping us. I know you've done a lot of great things, but Juno Beach does not have the $125 to $150 million to make those of us whole that you would be taking value from. And the stress and the inflammatory rhetoric caused by Diana Davis is so--
All right, if you can come up and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Bart Collins. I have two homes, 411 Jupiter Lane and 421 North Juno Lane. I've spoken a few times. The comment that-- and I agree with all the previous speakers-- you used the comment about wedding cake, and it is a very good point. I mean, if you really have to come in five feet on every elevation, your elevation, you know, north, south, east, west, I mean, these homes are going to look like Lego houses. They're going to look like-- they are going to look like a wedding cake. So I just-- and more expensive to build. So I just echo their comments and really wanted to kind of pick up on that. I attended the meeting on the 16th, the master planning meeting, which I thought was very good. I thought Dana Little is a very intelligent guy, and I think I applaud the council for, you know, getting their head around master planning, which is, as I understand, the intersection of US 1. And Donald Ross-- and this is not about master planning. This is about, you know, harmony. But I just found it interesting. There was a lot of discussion about Coretta, you know, and that I think the speakers were kind of saying, we just don't want to have more of that at that intersection where the town hall-- or where the town center is going to be. And Dana, you know, on a number of occasions said, you know, we have to understand that these developers that might come in and buy Lemire or the Holiday Inn, which I guess is potentially under contract, that they have property rights, you know, and that we have to be sensitive to those. And I just thought it was a little rich or a little bit inconsistent that here we are talking about our property rights of 315 people that have been here for quite a long time, 20 years for myself, you know? And no one's really seemingly kind of defending us, you know? But you're appointed, you know, consultant for master planning, you know, is the first to raise that you have some issues with property rights and what developers have the right to do. And I just thought it's a little inconsistent. Some of the council members attended that meeting, which you didn't have to, which I really applaud. You weren't all there, and I just wanted to kind of pick up or highlight that inconsistency. Thank you.
May I receive one more public comment from Ty Chivers, representing Tom and Patty Kelly?
Hi, everyone. My name is Ty Shivers. I am the Friends of Patty and Tom Kelly. I'm also a builder and a real estate agent, own a real estate company for 30 years here in Jupiter, and also have a construction company for 20 years. They purchased this lot at 451 Ocean from me maybe three, four, or five months ago, and there was no mention in anybody's due diligence of a harmony issue. Now that we've kind of scratched the surface and found out that there's an issue, I'm appalled by being out in the real estate world, talking to other real estate agents and builders and civil engineers, and having them tell me, oh, I wouldn't buy in Juno Beach. They're doing too many crazy things. The mandates are awful. Stay out of there. Get out of there. Don't get involved. And I would be remiss if I didn't share with you what I'm hearing. I'm blown away for being in this business for 30 years, and I always loved Juno Beach. I kind of felt like it was reminiscent of Jupiter Island Colony, where I lived for 17 years. And I always said, what a cool little town, own a little police department, great neighbors, great people. And then, all of a sudden, I start talking about, well, have you guys heard about this harmony thing? Oh, yes. You don't want to buy in Juno Beach. You don't want to do business in Juno Beach. I had two civil engineers say to me, when we were trying to construct these plans, I don't want to have anything involved. I don't want to be involved in Juno Beach. The town is a disaster. So I'm just letting you know what's happening out there behind the scenes. And these people here, they're hitting the nail on the head. And I'm just a guy that, you know, I don't have any vested interest in this town, but I do know-- I have a lot of respect for it. I think it's a great little town, and you guys are-- if you don't do something to make this change, it's going to end up being bad, in my opinion. Okay?
Thank you. That's it, Caitlin. All right, we'll start council discussion. And Mary Ann, I'm going to go ahead and start with you.
Why me? Okay. It has to be one, right? I think we basically complicated a simple matter. And I was part of this complication because I initially did not understand really what that 780 was all about. Also, I was always suspicious of the term harmony, because I understand it's very personable. If you're a musician and artist, et cetera, you have different ideas of harmony. And since I'm a mathematician, I believe in measures, in facts, something you can put your hands on. For example, when I-- when I heard that, you know, Juno Beach, you have a product plan, you're allowed to you build 35%. You have setbacks on three sides and easement in front. You have height restrictions, and then maybe you can have a little tower. And inside, you can do whatever you want. That was my-- you know, after I thought about it more. I was kind of naive. So now, when I'm listening to you people, all of you, I have to agree with you. And especially when I hear from people who live on the 11th floor of high rises, we love harmony. Well, if they loved harmony, they shouldn't have moved into a house like that. And then you hear from people who have bungalows, keep Juno Beach, Juno Beach, which is unrealistic. And then you learn from modern families, whose families are bigger now. They have more cars. They need more room, space. They talk about property rights. And it has really created a very difficult situation here in Juno Beach, where people who used to be friendly are not friendly anymore. And just because of some ordinance, of a definition for harmony, which we can't find. So I would really-- and also, I would like to make it easy, simple, fair, and avoid any legal trouble for the town. We're always so fiscally concerned. We don't want to risk anything. Well, the easiest way is if we go back to what these people want, and I'm willing to go along with them. Good for them.
Thank you, Mary Ann. As we go through-- we are limiting it to three minutes. Thank you, Mary Ann, for sticking to that. And as you discuss this, if you could just let us know if you're leaning towards option one or option two. I'm sure we'll hear it in your discussions, but at the end, just wrap that up. Diana, go ahead.
I have a PowerPoint I'd like to show, the visual mass. Thank you, Lynn, for your memo on the impact of Senate Bill 180 and the proposed direction for the town council vote. Lynn Rubin has told us that the Harmony Code is not a taking. It does not take away private property rights. Actually, the last four challenges to the town were challenges for buildings that were too large, or that were alleged to be too large. So the inflammatory rhetoric is calling this a taking, because that's not true. Our attorney told us that. And Marsha Wolf, I did not create the 300-area comparison. I was not on council at the time. So what's our goal here? I believe the town council wants to retain as many options as possible for moving forward with our master planning, the code amendments that are being worked on by Shinmore and Associates, and ultimately making sure that our single-family home reviews for new construction add value for all of our residents and maintain our property values. You will remember my newsletter survey, and we had 251 residents responded. 97% preferred reasonable regulations to address the size of new construction in context and thought that that was the best way to protect property values. So--
To be--
So for single-family homes in zoning codes RS 1 through RS 5, Senate Bill 180 does not prohibit continuing architectural review for single-family homes or continuing the harmony review under ordinance 780, as is codified in 341163B2, by either our planning and zoning board or staff, because-- because this language was in place at the time, the August 1, 2024 timeline, it's Senate Bill 80. At the workshop, our volunteer planning and zoning board members told us they didn't want to apply subjective standards and requested more quantitative terms for the review of size and context when comparing this bulk, mass, scale, and proportion. However, I believe that our planning and zoning staff, our professionals, don't have the same difficulty in applying these qualitative terms, the subjective terms. Appearance review by its nature is subjective. And this appearance review criteria in 34116, they apply to all zoning districts. So it's not just for single-family homes. So the first suggestion, I would suggest that we retain our zoning in progress while we make the code changes necessary, to have our planning and zoning staff as the final authority for single-family home appearance reviews. And we would still have the planning and zoning board sit as appearance review, but they would give their suggestions to the staff. Single-family homes review could then be similar to how they're conducted now, and we would have the appeal procedure to go to town council. And the second suggestion would be retaining ordinance 780 for our single-family homes. We've reviewed-- we've approved very large homes over the past year, three stories with a tower, two stories with a tower. Our professional staff had done a fantastic job putting together methodology in place that's working. By having this methodology in place that compares surrounding structure size, it gives our town more flexibility for our decision-making in new construction to ask for more landscape open space, to apply architectural design guidelines that will ultimately allow us to retain the character of our town. We can continue to work with our staff and Shinmore and Associates, who were hired to update our codes, with Dana Little of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, to help us find solutions, to provide guidance that can help everyone-- developers, residents, homeowners-- understand how to assure new construction projects for our neighborhoods will preserve the quality of life for our existing residents. We can continue to define the review parameters and spend more time on the John Callahan's proposal with the add guidance numbers for what percentage over the average, two times, three times, whatever makes the most sense, or every resident gets a second story and a tower feature. We can explore options with our contractors, as DeeDee Halpern has suggested, to make sure we have the best formula to make sure that new residential construction adds value to the community. And as Peggy Wheeler suggested, we can continue with the Architectural Pattern Book, and the comparison process that we've set up now provides a formula where staff can have more leverage to ask for these architectural design features to be included. So I'd like to just go briefly through this--
Diana? Just a second. No, I got it, Mary Ann. I've got it. We're supposed to take three minutes, and then we're going to do a motion, and then you can come back and do the presentation. Because I think, if I'm correct, when we voted on the protocols of doing presentation, there were three votes to go ahead and allow presentations. But if you could do that presentation on the backside, that would be great, because we're all trying to set our three minutes and stay within that time.
And just for-- the presentations to help understand 34-268, which is our base zoning, and what that might look like.
Okay. You can come back to that. John, I'll let you go next.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions for Lynn, and then also for the staff. Lynn, regarding the last paragraph of your memo on page nine, in your opinion, do we have-- do we currently have, quote, "sufficient criteria to guide the decision maker"?
That was the end of the question. I'm sorry.
That's a question for you. So-- In the last paragraph that you said, however, mere subjectivity does not render resorting ordinance invalid so long as there are sufficient criteria to guide the decision maker. Do we have sufficient criteria to guide the decision maker currently?
I mean, ultimately, that would be a court decision, but I do believe we have similar criteria to municipalities where it's been upheld. And in response to some of the public comments, town of Palm Beach uses 200 feet, and it is residential to residential. So we're not the only ones doing that. I think we do, but I wouldn't do it without having some sort of design review board in place with people who are experienced in the field. That's my recommendation, if you're going to go down that path.
Well, I get that. So you think we do have sufficient criteria to guide the decision maker currently?
I mean, I believe we do, but--
Thank you.
Okay.
Does the staff agree? That's my question to Frank DeVilla. Frank, do we have sufficient criteria to decide the decision maker? I want to make sure we all agree on that, and there's no disagreement between council and staff.
If we're speaking on option two, if we are to keep the criteria or the methodology that staff, you know, explained at the May workshop, then there is methodology. There is a criteria. If we're being told that we can no longer use that and we cannot codify that, then there is no way for staff to do option number two. You know-- Can I continue using the methodology that we were using before without it being codified? Because that was the concern that we received from the planning and zoning board and what we received from the residents, that it wasn't clear that, you know, they're coming to staff, hey, if I bring this house, will it get approved? That wasn't codified. Staff used the methodology so that, you know, as the town attorney mentioned, to be fair to everybody, because my opinion on what's harmonious may be different than your opinion, or may be different than the board's opinion. So for my opinion and my staff's opinion, we created that methodology. And there was a go-no-go number that we associated with that, which is, you know, test one and test two.
Thank you. So Lynn, when you say we have sufficient criteria, are you referring to the staff's test one?
No.
What are you referring to?
Well, I'm just referring to the bulk, scale, mass. These are the criteria that you look at. I don't have any problem with staff analyzing numbers to come to their recommendations, but it's the hard stop that I think could be problematic. And I don't think we could codify that, because I think it goes beyond what the code currently applies. But when you're talking about bulk, and you're talking about scale, and you're talking about proportion, of course, you want to look at numbers. I mean, that helps you analyze what's out there. That's the data that you're using to compare. But I don't-- my problem is, yeah, you can use those numbers to show how it relates to the other structures within the zoning district. My problem is, I don't think we could do the hard and fast stops or the tests, because they weren't codified. And I think that would be a 180 problem. I do. But you can still use that data. I think that data is very helpful.
But that would be a concern to staff, because now, how am I treating everybody fairly? If I approve this house and that one was off by 5%, if we're still using numbers and the other one wasn't, then we're back to where we were, you know, in the very, very beginning. beginning, which is just putting staff in a bad position.
And I understand that. And subjectivity makes everyone uncomfortable, and I understand that, too. And the only municipalities that seem to go with this subjective standard are your wealthier coastal communities that, you know, are very much into how things look. And it's, you know, that's very important, how things look. I understand it's uncomfortable, and I understand that it might lead to different results. But I'm just looking at it from a legal perspective. And if you look to that Burns decision, which Anne is wrong, too. It's not a First Amendment case. They rejected that part of it. They just went in to avoid for vagueness due process analysis and an equal protection analysis. So equal protection says everyone should be treated fairly. So this guy says, well, this one was approved and this one was approved. And they said, well, unless they denied something, unless they approved something that was exactly like what you were proposing, those aren't sufficient comparators. So it doesn't have to be exactly the same. And they also said that if they're approved at different times with different board members, well, that's another factor that makes them dissimilar. So it's just the comfort with the subjectivity. I get how it makes people uncomfortable. I get how it doesn't give you the guidance that a lot of people out there want. It's just, this is a policy decision for the council. If you want to regulate appearance, you're going to have to live with subjectivity or go back to base zoning, which is perfectly fine.
You know, John, is it okay for Rob, Rob would like to say something?
Yeah, I only got one question, and boy, I used up my three minutes and then something, didn't I?
Rob, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, stand up for my staff that are responsible for making these determinations. I've spoken with Frank and his team, and it's incredibly difficult for them to demonstrate fairness, simplicity, clarity, consistency with the standards absent their quantitative metrics that they developed on their own just to make things work. They couldn't apply the terms that we're calling guidelines and definitions in a manner that allowed them to fairly, in their view, evaluate land use applications. I would say, you know, look at Palm Beach County's regulations. They've got over 600 words of guidance to tell their architectural review committee, whatever it's called, how to make their decisions. We've got, what, six or seven words that aren't themselves defined? And that's part of the problem. The rest of the words, if we look at it, council has already told us that we can't embrace or apply anything that has to do with architectural review standards because the state has preempted us by law from doing that. If you strip away from the appearance review criteria, anything that relates to architectural review standards, you're not left with much. There's no meat on the bones there. And we're asking staff to revert back to the exact process and protocol that they used that delivered us to the doorstep of where we are today. We're saying, okay, forget all of that that happened that caused all of this chaos and this community angst, these concerns about property rights, these concerns about keeping Juno Beach, Juno Beach, and let's just try it again, because all we got to do is start over. I don't think that's a very practical solution to what our staff are confronted with on a day-to-day basis. And Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, along with option number two, should council decide to walk that path, comes the likelihood of significant legal cost and time. You told me that yourself.
I did, and it's in the memo.
And it's true, right? So, I mean, we've got staff can't do it properly in their own estimation. We've got people who believe, oh, yes, staff can, but they're not the people doing the job. We've got statutory prohibitions that have been affirmed by council on architectural review standards, so we can't use those. Palm Beach County, our example, has an expert group of people who do this, you know, land use, architects, whatever kinds of professionals they have. Plus, they have substantially more guidance than us. Plus, I would argue, if they're a historic preservation council or committee, they're also relying on, in their training and their background, the Department of the Interior's Historic Preservation Standards. If you've ever seen that book, it's not just a few words that lack definition. It's got a slew of subjective and quantitative criteria that they use to make those determinations. I worked it for almost 20 years in a community that has a very strong historic preservation ethic. I know the standards and the guidelines they use to apply them. This is one of those communities that if you were looking to implement that kind of program, they would be a national example of doing it. We can't do what they do with six or seven words. And it's not good to suggest that our staff and to even perhaps not accurately portray staff's own opinions about it to suggest they can do this fairly, consistently, and simply. It's not a good thing to try and impose that on staff. And arguably, if we had architectural review standards and we had some set of inducements or incentives that council would support and advocate for, we might see the kinds of outcomes that I think everyone in the community wants, both property rights advocates and keep Juno Beach, Juno Beach. And given the backdrop of SB 180 and the prohibitions we have, it's a very difficult conversation not to go with option one irrespective of what outcomes one's particular viewpoint is seeking to achieve. I don't think there's a lot of real options on the table, and we got to make the best of the one we can and not just simply default back to what delivered us to where we're at right now.
John, I'll let you start over since it was one question.
I asked that question just to, I guess, come to the conclusion that there's a disagreement between council and staff, and we're not all on the same page as a group. And we're going to solve this as a group. And I think it's fair to say that we don't feel that the criteria that we currently have is sufficient to guide the decision-maker. But Lynn, you do, and staff doesn't. So they don't feel like they have it. I don't think we have it. My next question would be, are we precluded from adding the criteria that seems to be missing to make a decision, you know, sufficient to decision-maker? Can we change the criteria? Can we add to the criteria so that it is sufficient to guide decision-makers? Are we precluded from that?
Like anytime you amend the zoning code now under 180, it's going to be under a lot of scrutiny. So I'm not sure, you know, you're saying add additional, if you're going to add additional criteria, you're going to be subject to a 180 claim.
Okay, thank, what about staff? Do you think we could add additional criteria?
My conversations with our personnel and my own analysis would say, no, we can't add additional criteria for precisely the reasons that our council has told us that's
Okay, well, thank you. I don't see a viable path for option two to go forward under that circumstance. So I don't know if it's a choice between option one and two. I think we need a different way to go forward if we're going to continue to enforce the Harmony Code.
Is that a question, John?
That's my statement.
Okay, DeeDee?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, if you could be a little louder, just speak up a little bit more.
Okay, thanks. I do agree with John. I don't think option one or two are sufficient. I think we need a third option. Let me just go back first and say, you know, regarding some of the comments about ordinance 780, it wasn't created with the intention to take anybody's property rights. It wasn't created willy-nilly. I listened back to the meetings where we voted on that. There were no negative comments from the audience, the public. There were no comments at all, positive or negative. It was almost like nobody attended those meetings where council.
Okay, okay, we got to keep it down. Please let DeeDee continue. Thank you.
Is that too loud, you mean? So anyway, we went in with our best intentions, and it was negligent for us to not request numbers from the planning and zoning director. We have a lot of resources, and I just believe we have to just say it like it is. We were negligent to not run the numbers when we created the ordinance. So I'm going to just put that out there. But we had, the council had every best intention of doing the right thing, and the goal was really to protect existing homeowners from being overshadowed by huge monolithic homes and losing their own property values as their privacy and quality of life were diminished. So we put this ordinance in place, and it blew up, is basically what happened. So now we're looking for a solution. I don't think that we are there. I, you know, understand both sides, and I'm the kind of person, I like to find a balance. I like to find a hybrid compromise. Is it possible, Lynn, if you can hear me, is it possible that if we just take the language that we have now, and the whole problem seems to be caused by this preponderance of 300 feet, can we just delete that sentence?
You could legally, could you delete that sentence? Yes.
Yeah, can we delete because, and look at homes within the same zoning district, which, as you said, could result in larger homes because, using the Apollo and US1 example. So that's sort of, to me, like a hybrid solution. Let's just remove the problematic language that's putting those limitations on people. And rather than pass that, I don't want to pass any legislation or policies tonight. I don't think we need to be haphazard about it. I think that we could potentially look at what that means because the words and the numbers have to match. We can't have the language without the numbers, and we can't have the numbers without the language that's appropriately representative. So I would like to see us just say, you know, applications of homes, I can't find the page with the language. I don't have it printed out, but just take out that preponderance of 300 feet and just say, within the same zoning district. So zoning districts are quite large, and people could wind up with a lot of benefits to that. But yet it keeps the zoning districts somewhat cohesive, which is, I think, what the spirit of the original ordinance 780 was to achieve. So I don't think we're there yet. I don't want to restrict John from putting a second story on his home. I think that's absolutely ridiculous. But I understand that we do want some standards. As Lynn said, you know, most small, valuable coastal communities do want to look aesthetically pleasing. So with respect to that, I think we need to find a hybrid that's both legal and permissible and flexible. Thank you.
The problem is, we are stuck with what we have. So yes, you can change that harmony, you can change that comparison, but we're still stuck with the same standards, which you heard staff say they cannot apply. So I don't think that fixes anything. We're still in the same conundrum we're in right now.
I thought that when you take away this preponderance, because we're not, the word preponderance means majority, but it's being calculated as an average. So the word hasn't even been applied correctly, which is also bizarre. But when we take out having to calculate a preponderance within 300 feet, don't we solve the calculation problem?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to explain the part, removing the 300 feet, all that does is creates, it gives you a bigger pool of homes to make a comparison, possibly maybe the same amount, not less, because we're currently doing the same zoning district as it is within 300 feet. Using this, we would still be using the same methodology that we've been using. So the problem does not go away by simply just removing those words. And staff uses the average and then as a starting point, but then we have two methods that we use, two times the average or no more than the range, just to clarify that.
And just filling out that.
Why are we using averages when preponderance means majority, and majority is different than average?
Go ahead, Rob.
I think we've had that whole preponderance conversation before and the analysis by staff and explaining how it is that we did it. I think what Frank is trying to highlight now is he's hearing what you're saying, but getting rid of preponderance is a necessary thing, and I think we all agree on that. But it doesn't attack the underlying problem in that we can't balance qualitative standards with quantitative metrics since we're prohibited by SB 180 from having the metrics part of it. And therein is the crux of the problem because in order to pursue option two, our staff are advising they need to have the metrics to be able to be fair, simple, clear, and consistent. They can't operate with just the words of, you know, bulk, mass, scale, those types of things, which really hint at base zoning standards and modifications to them. So there's no way to get from where we're at to a combination of qualitative and quantitative metrics because the quantitative metrics are off the table. And staff are saying, if I can't have the quantitative metrics and all I have are the qualitative standards, that doesn't work because that puts us right back to square one, where we created our own metrics to make that work in the first place, and that's what blew up and led us here. You know, so with SB 180 hanging out there, unless and until that clears, we're stuck in neutral. And, you know, even if one were to try to argue, staff, you're wrong. You can apply these qualitative six or seven words in a way that's fair, consistent, and all of the rest, even though staff says they can't, but if we accept that, you're even at another hurdle. Lynn has recommended that we get five or seven, how many ever it is, professionals in a design review board. Even if we got past the insurmountable, seemingly insurmountable staff interpretation issue, finding all those people with the right skill set and qualifications and maintaining them continuously over time so that you don't have gaps in your development review process is a very challenging task in a community the size of Juno Beach. And I would argue, having tried to do this myself in the past with only one advisor for historic preservation in a town in New York, I can tell you, it is not easy to find one person that will do it, let alone five or seven people who will do it. Other communities are blessed to have a wide array of architects, engineers, whatever types, planners, urban planning professors, and all those kinds of things that will come to the table, and they're not concerned about potential negative impacts to their professional or personal lives associated with the decisions they make. I don't know that that's an even feasible idea here in Juno Beach, and most likely, we'd have to pay people to do it and then still try to keep recruiting them over and over, over time, and they would get tired of doing it. I've had people that I've recruited from out of town to serve in this kind of advisory capacity. They didn't last long. They left. And the one person that we had, the council over time, first liked their decisions, then they didn't like them and wanted to get rid of them, and it was a real problem even with just one person. So at its core, SB 180 stops us from doing quantitative stuff to amend the ordinance. So we can't do it. The idea that there's some possible path to creating new quantitative standards and applying them to augment the qualitative ones in principle is a good idea, but in practical terms, it is completely infeasible. So we need to stop pursuing that fantasy right now. It's a fantasy, as long as SB 180 is stopping us from doing it. And I can't put the target on the planning director's back again and just have him repeat what we've already been through getting to today. So, you know, I hate to put it this way, but I don't see a clear path to anything but option one irrespective of how I feel about big houses, little houses, modern houses, you know, any other kinds of houses. The facts of the matter, and that's how I'm really trying to look at it, is there's not a clear path to anything but going to option one and doing our level best to pull that pattern book together as quickly as we can, hope that our residents, who a lot of people are calling developers, embrace it and say, hey, I have a long-term interest in Juno Beach. I don't want to just build a stacked box, you know, that looks like a cereal box one on top of another. I want to enrich our community and do my best job that I can on architecture. And the other people who come in from outside, spec builders and what have you, hopefully they'll embrace it. And if they don't, well, maybe our town council could spend some productive time trying to identify what sort of inducements might help a spec builder embrace our architectural guidelines and say, wait, instead of doing this and maximizing every square inch of my square footage, if I did A, B, and C, I'll get this in exchange and I'll do that. And given the backdrop of the regulatory environment that we're confronted with, which is not insignificant, and potential litigation that goes along with this and administrative nightmares and inconsistencies, I'd say, take the clean path and get it done. And when time and regulations allow us to, with council's support and direction, we can reopen the conversation and actually start talking about it again to the extent that the community wants us to, the town council wants us to, we can do that. But now it's just, we're spinning our wheels, going nowhere, and revisiting the past and saying, let's do it all over again. It's like cutting yourself and cutting yourself again. I'm not an advocate for that.
All right, DeeDee, do you have other questions or comments?
I just wanted to get rid of the preponderance of 300 feet. That's all. That's just, all the trouble came from that sentence.
Right, so you're clear on that, correct? No?
Uh, well, it, I don't know. Can't we just get rid of that sentence? It that that's.
I think I think that statement was, it it's not going to do and and it's not going to help us out. It's not going to help your position out to do that.
Well, my position, um, I my position is that, as I understood both sides, I understand the people whose property rights are being taken away because they can't build what they could have built six months ago. And I understand, um, you know, the perspective that, you know, there's a certain charm and appeal of our town, um, as eclectic as it is, and that there's a certain desire to not have gigantic homes overshadowing others. And and I don't know how to reach that middle ground where both sides win. And that's really what I've been looking for, is to have both sides um feel good about it and and for us to feel good about our decision. So that that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, well, I I have that solution here. I think I think the the council's in a mess right now. Um, I think it's clear to me that we need to go back to base zoning and work, really work on that architectural pattern book for single family homeowners that they can follow, and I believe they will follow it. I think Rob said that, you know, people want to live here. They really do. They're not going to go out and say, forget it, I don't want to build. They they want to live here. They want to follow direction. And I think they will do that for us. Um, we can make it work for both sides. Um, I don't, I think if we don't, we're going to uh have lawsuits that will come with or without new trained board, and especially now with the town attorney suggesting to remove the metrics. The entire process has been flawed from the beginning because the ordinance was subjective. Um, staff created the metrics. I knew nothing about these metrics at the time. I heard it when I watched Planning and Zoning meeting. It has reduced the as of right development standards. It was without council knowledge, um, our council's approval or codification of the metrics. And I I I know, DeeDee, that you mentioned that nobody said anything. It's because I I did make a statement, well, we're only defining the word that that day that we did this. And nobody said a word. Nobody said, oh, no, we're not just defining a word. We're actually going to put metrics to this, and we're actually going to take away square footage on homeowners' properties. And, you know, that was never discussed, if you go back to that meeting. Um, and I just think trying to move forward in this capacity is a bad idea. It's going to create legal ramifications based on those facts alone. Um, in Len's analysis, it states the risk for legal challenges are not limited to the use of uncodified tests or metrics, the unpredictable nature of the inherently subjective regulations, the reluctance of the planning and zoning board to enforce nonquantifiable standards, and the potential for inconsistent application of those regulations. Um, it seemed, it's a simple decision for me because, yeah, I do want to look out for the best interest of the residents. And lawsuits create a cost to the town, and the taxpayers have to pay this cost. Um, I did find it interesting when part of the analysis said that these metrics were not codified, but developed to provide transparency to applicants and members of the public regarding staff's analysis. Um, it it stating that the metrics were developed to provide transparency, I want to know when council had no transparency and the residents had no transparency, how do we feel that that's transparent whatsoever? Um, trained review board consisting of individuals in the fields of architectural, planning, real estate, and other fields. To move forward with that just seems like, you know, we're we're going to be putting more restrictive or burdensome um restrictions onto our our residents. Um, I don't think there's sufficient criteria to guide the decision maker. Um, I think the entire process reeks of a lawsuit, and I don't think we need to be an attorney to see that coming. Um, in the final paragraph, it says, well, town staff could continue to analyze the square footage and floor area ratio within the comparison area. They should avoid the adoption of strict formulas. Um, that's also messy. How can staff enforce or analyze square footage and floor area without those metrics or formulas? Um, ordinance seven eighty does not allow for consistency for applicants or give our residents sufficient criteria. There was a wise man on planning and zoning that said, is it fair to all residents? And that's what we have to look at. We have to look, is this fair to all of our residents? How fair is it to allow some to build and the last ones to not be able to build their homes and have that same ability? Um, there's nothing in the zoning manual that someone can read and understand the landowner's rights. When I moved here, I read the zoning book. I knew exactly what I could do, and it was very clear for me. Um, but besides the technical and legal issues, we have a hundred and seventy signatures of people that live in the area that are affected. This all matters to them. And even though we do understand that other people don't want large houses next next to their ranch houses, we really need to, as a council, unite behind a plan that works for everyone. And in my opinion, that's going back to base zoning, work on an architectural pattern book that any homeowner can follow. I can almost guarantee that people will follow those standards because they want to live in Juno Beach, and they also want to be good neighbors. And the town has just not had a product to show them, to make them good neighbors. So let's start building a plan together that can bring our town back together as well. So I'm for option one. And if I can go down as well, and and I know, Mary Ann, you said option one. I'm sorry, Diana.
I seconded.
I'm going to let you go again because, well, let's, do we have time? Let's do a motion. I'm going to go ahead and pass the gavel. And I'd like to make a motion to go back to base zoning and do option one, and I'd like a second on that.
I seconded.
All right, and Diana, if you want to go ahead.
I do. I'd like to show the PowerPoint as to what base zoning will do for the town. And I would, I would like to address Rob Cole. I do appreciate you protecting your staff. But appearance reviews are subjective. Thirty-four one sixteen applies to all our zoning codes, commercial, multifamily. Um, so if staff can't do subjective analysis for single family homes, where does that leave us for these larger projects? And I'll just leave that as a question. And next slide, what's the visual mass if we just use thirty-four two sixty-eight? I always refer to this Olympus Drive House. It was built by architecture architect Rick Gonzalez and William Waters. It's over five thousand square foot, and it's this floor area ratio of point fifty. When you have a floor area ratio of around point five oh, uh, you can use architectural uh tools such as roof slope, balconies, porches to minimize mass. Next slide. With base zoning, um, the RS one is ten thousand square feet. You go down to RS five is five thousand five hundred square feet. The the criteria that really drives the size of these homes is the thirty-five percent lot coverage. There are setbacks and other things too, but it's typically the thirty-five percent lot coverage. So that's a point seven two um floor area ratio to a point seven four floor area ratio. Next slide. This is the castle, uh, the Italian villa on Mars, uh, five seventy-one Ocean Drive. It was in Leslie Thomas's presentation. She represented the seven hundred Ocean Drive when she was saying houses that are out of harmony that are really large. Well, under our base zoning, this is point six one floor area ratio. So base zoning with without the appearance review criteria that we've had for many, many years, you're going to get a point seven two to a point seven four. They're much larger than even this Italian village on Mars. Next slide. This is the South Lyra Circle home. We had several people that live around it that um had concerns about it. Its floor area ratio is point five four, so it's going to be a lot smaller than point seven four, the max under the new. Next slide. If you go into our PUDs that, uh, planned unit developments, they're their own zoning codes, and they have their own setbacks. But if you want to look at the size of a structure comparison to the lot, this is a home, um, at four fifty Old Town Lane. And um, because it's a PUD, they have their own requirements. It's um point seven three. So um, you can see this, it's it's a beautiful home. It's just different than we have now in um the on the ridge. Next slide. There's the Old Town. I I did get that picture from Zillow, the first picture. This this second one is from uh Google Earth. Um, next slide. Another PUD is the Surfside Lane. And the the largest homes there are are point six three and uh point uh six eight floor area ratio. They're still really large homes, but they're not, they're not touching that point seven four. Next. So conclusion, to preserve our existing codes for architectural review and harmony reviews, I understand architectural review is probably out, but the it's important to retain the character of our community. I I agree with DeeDee Halpern that we need another solution, and we need to continue working on the criteria for the harmony reviews of size and context. And we can get help with the contractors, Shinmore and Associates. They had been approved to look at uh soundness, low growth, and to look at floor area ratio in the approvals that council had previously given them. Dana Little of Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, he can help us to assure that we allow new construction that enhances our community and preserves our property values for our existing residents. And if you want to look again at the next, the next PowerPoint, these are homes that I take my hat off to staff. They are professionals, and they they do this um subjective is part of what they do because architectural review and the uh appearance review has subjective terms. And they've approved, I think it's seven homes, under this current uh current harmony uh qual- current current harmony protocols. And even with um, okay, these are the homes that have been approved. So you can see they're not small homes. Next slide. This is uh four seventy-nine Ocean Ridge Way. I know you've had the parade of parables that you're not going to be able to develop anything, but this is three stories with a tower. Uh, next, next slide. Uh, here's another one, four ninety-one North Lyra Circle. It's two stories with a tower. Next, next. Here, two twenty Ocean Drive, they're an addition, addition of a second story. Um, next slide. Uh, the the seven hundred uh Ocean Drive, again, it's a PUD, so it's a little bit different. But that was, uh, this fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven square feet uh was approved for that new home. Next slide. And then this is four ten Diana Lane, two stories, thirty feet with a tower to thirty-five feet. It's over five thousand square feet. Um, so there are large homes that are being approved through, that's that's it. That's all the slides. There are large homes that are being approved. The staff's doing an excellent job. I understand that they might not want to do these subjective reviews, but it really is part of the job. And it's part, our thirty-four one sixteen has been in our code for many years. Uh, somebody said nineteen ninety-two. Len, do you know when, how long we've had appearance review? Nineteen seventy-nine is when our codes were first enacted, but that, and it's always been subjective, so this is not something new. Um, I I, of course, I disagree going with that base zoning. I I think you're going to be shocked with the size of the houses you get when you go to the point seven two and point seven uh four. And we've always had that modificate, we've always had the modifying influence of the appearance review um on that base zoning. And it's, and it not just single family homes, it applies to all of our area, all of our zoning code areas. So I I think that even under Senate Bill seven eighty, even under Senate Bill um one eighty, that you can still do guide, you can develop guidance and policies that clarifies existing codes that were in place since August first, twenty twenty-four. And the clarify, and the uh guidance that we have now, uh, the comparison of mass, size, bulk, if you, if you don't fall within that two times or three times, I'm not sure exactly what we're applying. But if you don't fall into that, then you can, you know, location, locate, uh, location on the lot, the landscaping, architectural reviews, there's other mitigating factors. And unless we keep that harmony review, we're not going to have the opportunity to require these mitigating factors. So we lose a lot of our flexibility in what we can allow. Thank you.
Just, we have more discussion?
I have a question. Could you please summarize this in thirty seconds, what you said?
Point seven two to point seven four is what you get with base.
Without numbers, just words.
Very, very, very large versus the character of our community.
I have a question.
That's Mary Ann?
Well, you said one sentence, right? I got it.
That doesn't mean it was right or rational or reasonable.
All right, DeeDee, do you want to add some additional discussion?
Yeah, yeah, a question for Len. I just want to be very clear. Len, you've stated that we cannot do appearance review, correct?
No.
Or that we we can do it, but.
Architecture, I said we can do architecture review. Well.
You're saying we can, it, does our base zoning include appearance review? I don't have it in front of me, so.
If you go to base zoning, it, there's no appearance review component to it. It would just be the site area regulations.
And that's what we were doing prior to this preponderance of three hundred feet.
No, see, the we were also applying the architectural regulations that were now preempted from. So that, that was some guidance anyway. You had to, you had to meet the architectural styles or a mix thereof.
And that would be gone?
Well, that's already gone. We, the council decided not to enforce those anymore. Because of the statutory preemption.
Oh, no, okay. I just think we're pa- I I feel like we're painted into the corner.
I think Senate Bill one eighty did paint us into a corner in a lot of different ways. Because I I I hear, I hear, you know, come out with a compromise and, but for Senate Bill one eighty, maybe that would have been possible. But if we can't do anything that's more burdensome or restrictive, we're painted into a corner. So it's either go with what we have or go back to base zoning.
So Diana, you're you're advocating that we stick with what we have, even given the legal risk. Do I understand your position correctly?
Well, the thing about appearance review, there's two parts. One is architectural review, and and the second part is the appearance review, which is the harmony criteria review of size, uh, the review of scale, mass, bulk, proportion in context. So, and we've always had some sort of harmony review also. We just didn't have those those terms defined. Len is saying that the architectural section, um, that there's some difficulties with applying that to single family homes. But the harmony portion, we could keep that and, you know, even though we couldn't codify any clarifications to that code because of Senate Bill one eighty, we could add more definitions or clarifications, or we could, we could do something else to, we could retain those options to um make it, to clarify things.
Okay, thanks.
I think.
Is that what you were saying, Len?
No, I think any amendments are going to be problematic, even if you're attempting to clarify, because I think people are going to claim that.
But we could continue doing what we've done for the last year.
Either we have to continue to do what we do, which staff is obviously not comfortable with and doesn't think it can, or, you know. But see, the problem is the legal standard is very deferential, so there's no cases out there really. The only cases that talk about the subjectivity in these types of appearance ordinances, they've been upheld. There are some that they haven't been upheld, but they're not there like because the words weren't defined or they weren't in the ordinance, and they added words to the ordinance that weren't in the ordinance, but nothing that was compare comparable. But the problem is, it's a very deferential legal standard for the due process void for vagueness argument and even for the equal protection argument. But then, as I said, you still have the Burt Harris looming. You have all these other things out there.
Regardless of what we do, I think we should have um the staff, our P and Z staff, do the review of the applications. I I don't think we should leave it to our planning and zoning board.
If you're going back to base zoning, there's no need for the planning and zoning board to do it anymore.
Uh, and why is that? I thought that.
Well, because you're applying objective criteria that you meet it or you don't. So you have setbacks, you have height, you have lot coverage, you have landscape open space. Staff can easily determine whether those are met or not.
I see. All right, that's all I have for now.
And I I'm gonna, there's been a couple of things that were mentioned, like um appearance review actually began in twenty twenty-one, but um, Rob, I think there were some things that were said, and I'd like you to comment on those if you could and clarify them so that council is very aware of what's.
Sure, just just as a factual matter, um, appearance review has not applied to single family homes since nineteen ninety-two. It didn't apply to single family homes until twenty twenty-one. And uh, that's according to our planning and zoning director. So given that it applied in twenty twenty-one, we've since continuously experienced chronic problems with having applied it to single family homes. We went back and tried to define harmony. We added these six or seven words, you know, that mass, bulk, scale, yada yada, all of the things that really point to base zoning, you know? Those are all metrics that are in base zoning. But we put words in there and suggested to our staff to handle them differently, kind of figure it out. our staff to handle them differently, kind of figure it out. But that's only been since 2021. We've amended that section of the code twice since 2021, and now we've spent since at least May, months of talking about continuing problems with harmony being applied to single family homes, and we still haven't solved them. Even tonight, we're spending a very long amount of time. Appearance review itself, and I'll say it again, I think I might have mentioned it earlier, but as we've acknowledged, architectural review is off the table. It's prohibited by state law. Council decided we're not going to try and test that. And yet, in appearance review, we're kind of still, for some unknown reason, angling towards trying to continue to do it. But if you read the language, it's embedded with all kinds of architectural standard language. So we'd have to go through and even weed that out. If there were some path, some viable path, and I'm not seeing it, to continuing to do that based on our staff's inability to apply the standards, even if one accepts that as a possibility, you have to go back and strip out anything that's related to architectural review from the appearance standards. What you have left at that point is like next to nothing. It's a shell of six words and an assemblage of words that really aren't meaningful in trying to cultivate the outcomes that I'm hearing our council members speak to, some members of the community speak to. I'll throw it back out there, you know? Option one, base zoning is what we had prior to 2021 for single family homes, and we've got a pattern book that I think conceivably, if done well, could be a very valuable tool.
I thought the appearance review that had all the pictures of the houses, I thought that memo was from 2019. Is that, am I remembering that wrong?
I think that's architectural review, not appearance review.
I think that's right.
But that's part of appearance review. There are two parts of appearance review. It's architectural review and then a citing act review, and citing act review is where the harmony is with the size, bulk, mass, scale. So that, it was my understanding that that had been applied, just not by the board. It had been something that staff reviewed.
I believe that 2021 is when we created the, we gave the responsibility to the planning and zoning board for site plan and appearance review. That was 2021. That's when we started having those meetings. That's when we were having P&amp;C board do site plan and appearance review. And at that time, the appearance part was a very short sentence that was, it shall be in harmony with the neighboring area. And then the main focus of our review at that time was architecture. So the first year or so.
Yes.
But that's what it was. It was architecture.
I pulled all the old ordinances. So prior to the change in 2021, all it said was, so it's talking about, you know, this is under the section that's talking about the criteria. So all it said in prior to the amendment in 2021, it just said, final review and approval or denial or approval with modifications by the town council for all these other ones. And then it said, single family detached dwellings shall be subject to review and approval only by the town planning and zoning department, period. That's all it said. And as Frank said, the only, so we did have the architectural review back then because we've always done that, even for the single family. And the only sentence we had that staff would apply ostensibly as part of this appearance review is, is of a design in proportion which enhances and is in harmony with the area. That was all we had.
Right. And there were no criterias, no definitions added to that at that time. So the review of harmony, if we were doing one at, prior to that time, was base zoning. Because again, base zoning is what we would consider harmony within that zoning district because each zoning district is different, has different regulations, different setbacks. So each zoning district would be in harmony with each other.
And I think it's important to note that the architectural standards are potentially what was driving much of the outcomes that people are attaching to positive things in terms of what single family homes look like. So since we're prohibited by state statute from applying those, the pattern book that we're talking about endeavors to recapture some of those benefits on a voluntary basis while cultivating the kinds of outcomes that seem to create a lot of angst that people believe are beyond our reach anymore. And I don't, I don't believe they are. If we get the pattern book done, people voluntarily embrace it, and maybe again, council sees their way to finding some inducements to help other people who don't automatically gravitate to pick it up and say, yeah, I ought to do this. And then you recapture all those benefits from prior to 2021 that people seem to kind of be attached to. You know, all this development before 2021 was great and it's consistent with what Juno Beach is. Part of that was the architectural review. And that's what we're trying to bring back with, with what staff are really saying and then saying again and saying again tonight. And I would hope that our council and the community could stand behind that kind of approach and be committed to, if necessary, revisiting it later if it's not working. And particularly if SB 180 fades away into the sunset and those rather rigid prohibitions on us are gone. There's not, there's not a good viable alternative on the table besides one and part of one. Again, recapture some of those, those days that people felt the architectural outcomes are what we'd like to try and promote today.
Just as clarification, I was on the planning and zoning board in 2021. At that time, the council transferred the authority to review single family homes to the planning and zoning board. I believe Diana Davis was on the board and I think she was sitting right there and I think I was sitting right here. And once the planning board got that job to do the appearance review, we asked the town staff, how have you been doing appearance review since 1992? Because we would like to know how the staff was applying it all those years and we didn't have the benefit of that. So Frank, when we asked you that, the answer was not, we, our criteria from 19, and it's before your time, it was, you know, three, four zoning directors before you. The answer was not the way the town staff looked at it was, did it meet base zoning or not? Because it would be, it would be no point. Because it has to meet base zoning already. You wouldn't have a standard of harmony and say, we look to see if it meets base zoning. It's totally redundant. We didn't know how the staff was handling harmony from 1992 to 2021, and that was part of the problem. So just to clarify that point, the staff had been, it got put in in 1992, site plan and appearance, and the staff had been determining single family homes since 1992. And still to this day, I don't know how the staff's been doing it from all those years. There's no frigging town records on this stuff. It goes back to the records. We'd like to see the records of how things were done in the past and it just don't seem to be there. But that's part of the problem we have is what was in the past is, you know, a little unclear.
And the, just, oh, I'm sorry. You can go.
No, I just wanted to say, you know, we talk about the past, what happened before in this year, that year, who said what? But that doesn't bring us closer to a decision. And I feel, you know, we talked a lot. And now there comes a moment where we have to make a decision. And I want you to remember that we lived, we created this beautiful paradise without the definition of harmony with bulk, mass, whatever, scale, proportion. I still don't know the difference between bulk and mass, and I would like to ask anybody on the days to explain it to me. I looked at various definitions, they are very similar to me. And what I'm saying, we created this town without the definition of harmony. We all agree, oh, there are no exception that we love the town, that it's beautiful. And still we want to fix it. I don't get it. There is no problem. And we want to fix something.
Okay.
What's the problem?
Hang on, hang on. We're just, all right. So do we have any other comments from council or questions for Lynn? Diana, go ahead.
I have a comment. Because of Senate Bill 180 and that we're prohibited from making changes to our existing codes until October 1st, 2027, if we vote to go with option one, then there wouldn't be an opportunity to change that for architectural review forever, but for mass, size, scale, harmony criteria until October 2027. But if we do keep the, if we go with option two, then there's an opportunity to work on those criteria. And then depending on what those criteria are, we could address that through a policy memo or further guidance like was proposed, like was given to us at the workshop.
All right. Any other comments? DeeDee, you fine? Okay. John?
I'd like to make one comment then call for a vote.
Okay.
My, my comment is, I'm not sold on option one being the way forward. And therefore, I'm voting against option one. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna just make a little statement here. I think, to wrap it up for me, I think staff should not apply the metrics because Lynn is saying we shouldn't have metrics. Staff cannot have sufficient criteria based on that. We, we need to work, we need to bring this town together and we need to work on a pattern book. We need to work on an architectural guide, and I think that's the way to help the town and for everyone to blend and try to get a compromise for everyone. And I think that's the direction we should go. What we have as an issue right now is staff needs a direction on deciding this tonight and staying with, and Rob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but staying with what we have on 780 and going with option two. And John, if I understand you right, you wouldn't vote for option one, so you're voting for option two?
That's not what I said.
All right. Go ahead. Can I have an explanation on what you mean by that then?
That's it. I'm against voting for option one. I'm not convinced the pattern book is sufficient to get to where we want to go. I'm a skeptic on that pattern book, but I'd love to see it work. I think we need to pursue other avenues for option two, and we can talk about it, but we can't talk about it until we dispense with this option one vote.
Okay. So Lynn, there was something brought up about retaining zoning in progress. I don't think that's an option, correct?
Well, that's not in its current form, no.
Correct.
Look, we have to, we can't just keep this in limbo. So we have to, we, I agree, Mayor, we have to come up with a direction because we have applications out there. We need to know what standards to apply. We can't just leave this in limbo forever.
Right. And I think...
We need, I mean, staff needs direction.
So if, if we're not going to have the vote, we can take the vote now for the motion that's on the floor. And if that fails, then we have to look at something else then and come up with those solutions. You want to go ahead and do a roll call?
The motion on the floor is for option one. Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern? Here, on mute.
I'm going to say nay. I think we can come up with something else. I don't know what it is, but I'm just going to say that I think we need to talk to the consultant.
Motion, House 2 to 3.
All right. So we need, I need some direction a little bit because if council wants to come up with options, it can't be more restrictive. I'm not sure what you're thinking, John, if you want to go ahead and...
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to explore the town attorney's opinion that we cannot further decline, define the harmony terms because it would be subject to being more restrictive. I don't think that's true. And I think, I would like to ask about a scenario and how that would actually happen. If we went ahead and defined the harmony terms quantitatively, like I believe the staff required, like the town manager said we... If we, if we did define those terms quantitatively, the town manager said we need metrics. If we added those metrics, where is the, where's the downside to that, Lynn? Are you saying that, I mean, what happens if we define those metrics? Where's the, where's the we can't do coming from?
I just think they could be perceived as more burdensome or restrictive than what the code already says.
Okay. So when you say they can be perceived, by who and what do they do about it?
Okay. So that's all in the memo under Senate Bill 180. If somebody believes they're more restrictive, more burdensome, they can file an action against the town. Once they file that action, it stays enforcement of those regulations until the court makes a decision. And if the court decides in favor of the plaintiff or property owner, whoever it may be, we have to pay their attorney's fees.
And what would the court decide if somebody, I mean, who would have standing to file something like that?
It's like any resident or business owner in the town is the way the Senate Bill 180. It's very odd. It doesn't say property owner, it says resident or business owner.
And what would be the relief that they would ask for?
It's declaratory and injunctive relief. So it's that you can't enforce it.
What's that, Lynn?
It's, here, I'll actually read from it.
I, give it, give you a page number here.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Because I did go through it. Okay. So it says on page two, on the bottom of page two, it says, Senate Bill for 180 further authorized a resident or business owner in a municipality to bring a civil action for declaratory and injunctive relief against the municipality for violating the foregoing prohibitions. Once the action is filed, which is what I was just saying, the resident or business owner is entitled to a preliminary injunction against the municipality preventing the implementation of the land development regulation in this case, or procedure. If such a civil action is successful, the resident or business owner is entitled to an warrant of reasonable attorney's fees and costs. And then it just says that they don't get attorney's fees and costs if they give you notice and you repeal it, you know? So you have an opportunity to repeal it once you get that notice.
Is that 14 days?
Yeah, you have to, you have to withdraw it within 14 days if it's proposed and if it's already enacted, you have to give notice of intent to repeal it within 14 days.
Mayor? No, wait. John's not finished. Hang on. Are you finished, John?
I remember that I negotiated a...
Wait, wait, wait. Mary Ann, I got to make...
I negotiated a pause in between.
Oh, you have to go.
There is nobody, no adult who can concentrate...
Mary Ann, your mic's off. Turn your mic on.
Okay. There is no adult who can concentrate more than two and a half hours. And I think it would be just wise if we all had a break.
Okay. Is everyone okay with break? Five minutes or three minutes? Just come back when you're finished. Just come back when you're finished. [laughing] Pardon my mic on. We're gonna re-adjourn. John, I think you were talking at the time.
Okay.
If you want to finish.
Thank you. Um, we back? So, so Len, what my quest, my, my, I guess my question would be if somebody was going to file for injunctive relief, they would say that towns, what I'm saying is if, if we passed a package of more definitive criteria for these harmony elements that would satisfy the town's need for metrics. And somebody filed a court, a lawsuit against us and said Senate Bill 180 prohibited that, our defense would be that we actually passed a series of metrics that made it less restrictive, not more restrictive, as a package. If we put these metrics in there and we, and our defense would be to a, to a court, and I don't know how, I don't know if it's a court or a jury or, or who hears the case, that the harmony ordinance is way more restrictive. It says preponderance of the homes. Every home has to be like that is there. If it's all one story, that's all you could build is one story. And say, we're loosening up these restrictions. Here's how we did it. We passed these criteria that gives more definition what we really meant and it's less restrictive. I think we would likely prevail in court. I can't see a judge saying, no, technically you said one square foot and forget about the 99% of the, of the benefit you did. Is that, is that your position that we would lose on, on a court case for a, what, to me is a technicality? If the, if the essence of what we're doing is making it less restrictive and everybody can understand that and it's clear from the public record that we're taking something that's very restrictive, preponderance of the homes, and making it less restrictive, that that's a losing proposition in court?
Look, that in and of itself is not, I, I said you could remove the preponderance and go to the staff recommended language or some other language that expands the scope. I don't think that makes it more restrictive. I just think then when you start applying, putting in quantitative standards, they could argue that you're making more restrictive. Does it or does it not? I don't know. It, it depends on the circumstance. It depends on what you adopt. It depends on how the judge is feeling that day. Who knows? You just never know. And once, and once it goes to the legal system, you just never know what's gonna happen.
Okay. But what's likely to happen? That's what I'm saying. Never, I understand you never know, but it seems to me if we put something perfectly reasonable that makes it less restrictive, clear to everybody of what the hell we're talking about with this harmony, that it's gonna be held up. Now, even if the judge rules against this and there's, and they knock that out, that prohibition, and, and I, I don't, I don't see somebody that is not affected that doesn't live in Juno Beach that has any standing in court, except anybody. Yes, I guess technically the, the mayor of West Palm Beach could file a case against this and, and say, oh, I have, I'm standing here, but I think unless it's somebody that's directly affected as a property owner-
It says any resident or business owner. That's, that's how the language reads for whatever. I don't know why it doesn't say property owner, but it says resident or business owner.
I, I guess a business owner that was presumed to be harmed by the, by the application of this more restrictive, what they claim is more restrictive.
Or a resident. Yes, correct.
So a resident that is, claims to be harmed, that suffers harm because of what we did to clarify the harmony and, and the junk of relief would be to take, to say your, your ordinance is null and void, then, then there, it would go back to what we had before, preponderance of the homes, which is even worse. So then what will-
Well, but then you still have the challenge to that. I mean, it's-
So, so then a person would have to go to say, okay, now, because I asked the judge to remove this restriction and I am now subject to this harmony ordinance that says preponderance. So it's like, well, you brought it on yourself. You asked for this. How could you come around and say, you know, that's like someone says, you know, kill this parent and claim they're an orphan. Right? I mean-
Well, okay. And I understand what you're saying. So you're saying, I mean, look, you can make that argument, that you're not making it more burdensome, restrictive. You're actually making it less, whatever the case may be. My concern is not with that comparator language. My concern is with whatever metrics you put in there. I, I, I don't, I don't know what, what you're anticipating as far as metrics.
We didn't get that. And I wasn't part of the council when we did those metrics, but I think the council that were here, I, I pretty much know what they were trying to achieve. That, you know, there was a, you know, a year, go back a year ago, and it, it was, by the way, it was unanimous that the, the town staff, what they proposed, the town manager, David Dias, proposed this, the planning and zoning board debated, approved it, the council approved it, the general feeling that there's homes, how homes are too big being approved and they need to be scaled back. In, in general, that's what I think it was. But the other council members can surely describe it in more detail and give the staff those metrics that they need and, and get away from the generalities and get specifics. I'm, I'm sure we can get there. I don't know what they are, but I'm sure as intelligent people as we are, level-headed people, we could say, what the hell were we trying to approve a, a year ago? What were we trying to achieve? And nobody was saying, going back to base zoning, don't do nothing because it was unanimous to do something. There was elections about that. People ran on, on the case, keep Juno Beach, Juno Beach. It, it wasn't even controversial that we should do something. It seemed to me like the whole entire town was on the same wavelength as let's scale this back. So it's, it's not an outlier position that, you know, that the council went down that route, but they did and it wasn't quite right. And I get that. Everybody gets that. Preponderance isn't the right word, but what's wrong? We're just fixing it and moving on with that.
John, I'm gonna butt in here because you're absolutely wrong that the town and the council knew what was going on and that they had some idea about the metrics. Were you saying that council knew that we had metrics? Is that what you're stating?
I'm saying that when, when the ordinance says something about height, what, what do you think they were talking about?
It's a definition. That's what we thought it was. I said that in the meeting. I said, oh, we're just defining this and we're not setting any metrics. We weren't saying that it's going to take anything away from single-family homes. Nobody, not one time during that session, said anything to any of us that it was nothing more than a definition.
What would the point of defining height be?
Well, I, that's a good question. That's a good question. But no, I, you can't say, Marianne and I both are saying, we didn't know. DeeDee, you need to answer that. Did you know that this was gonna take property rights away? Because we did not-
Take property rights?
Diana, stop. I'm talking, please. Stop, Diana. DeeDee, when we did this, we did not have metrics at the time. So when we did it-
We did, you asked me to speak, so let me speak, please.
Well, I will, but I'm asking you the question. I gotta be thorough on the question. Thank you.
I understand the question. Thank you. Um, no, we were not given any metrics by staff, by the attorney, and, and the planning and zoning board wasn't giving, given metrics. I sat there in the meeting, we're planning and zoning, spoke about it, and they talked about adding that word, preponderance. They really were happy about it because they felt that it, it added a limitation. I mean, really, that's what was going on. They, there was a desire to put the appearance review in the context of, of the houses within 300 feet. And the motive wasn't nefarious. It, it was to control the size of development. When I listened back to the meeting, and I know we're going back, but sometimes looking back helps you figure out how you got, where you got. You know, there was a, a mention of the house at Venus Drive. Now, even though that that's multifamily and not single-family, it had an impact and, and that came up, you know? So I think we were, we, I was recognizing that there was an adverse impact of these particularly large homes. And just because the base zoning worked for many years, but it worked only because there wasn't this desire to build three-story monolithic homes. It didn't mean the code was right. It, I, I think the code was the code. It was the people's desire and the way they use that tool that changed. The code is a tool for building and the code stayed the same, but the people's use of that tool changed.
And, okay.
And that, and that's the problem. But I, I wholly agree with John that just because we add some criteria or, or we enhance it, doesn't mean it has to be more restrictive. It could actually be, like John said, defining, further defining doesn't have to be more restrictive. And that's the goal I'm trying to find. I would really love to put this in the hands of another party outside of our town. I think we're chasing our tails here. I, I would like to see a consultant work on this and bring us something else. If, if it's only to wind up back at the same place, I'm willing to accept that. But I think, you know, sometimes you have to look outside, you know, the, the forest to get out of it. You know, you need a, an aerial view. And I would like to see a consultant bring us something that's not more restrictive, but maybe just more declarative.
Okay. So DeeDee, thank you. I, I do not remember the two-family, if something came up on that two-family home on Venus Drive, it definitely wasn't in any regard, you know, at that stage, if somebody would have said, we're looking at no one building larger homes or this is going to be applied so no one can build larger, that was not discussed. I don't remember it. Marianne, I'm gonna ask you the same question. Do you remember when we defined that word? Is anybody asking that question?
It was in the meeting.
Okay. Or talking about that?
It was done in a- Oh, it was done in a very nonchalant way. You know, harmony, well, what's wrong with harmony? Da, 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 da. But, you know, it, there was no number set to it, no definition. It, it was like a word amongst many.
Okay.
And I'm surprised that right now this word harmony caused this so much disharmony.
And DeeDee, you know, we don't, in council, full council, we do have to make a decision today because staff can't continue doing what they're doing. You have to give them some direction. Now, it's gonna be up to three of you that voted against going back to base zoning, zoning to come up with that decision. So you guys need to start working on this and decide what you can do to help the staff out.
Fair enough.
That we will not get sued.
If I may, Len?
Boy.
Len, Len, are we obligated to have a solution tonight? Are you saying we can't do zoning in progress for 30 days?
Well, in order to do zoning in progress, you have to give specific direction. So you would have to come up with three, three of you would have to come, just like we did in the end of May, three of you would have to come up with specific direction for staff or the consultant or whoever is gonna do it, as to what you want to be done.
Well, I would make a motion to have a consultant review this scenario and come up with an alternative that is not more restrictive, that allows people to build the second story or towers that they're entitled to while adding definitions to bulk scale and mass to, I, it's a sloppy motion, but I think we need a consultant and that's-
Hold on, Diana, hang on. She's not, hold on.
I was going to amend the motion if you-
Are you making a motion, DeeDee?
Yes. I have a motion-
Can I amend the motion? Are we seconded before? I'd like to second the motion and ask to amend the motion. The mo, I would like to amend the motion to have it say, continue the zoning in progress for single-family homes to allow time for code changes to be put in place to one grant planning and zoning staff final authority over appearance review 34-116, 3B2 for harmony with the language comparison of the buildings or structures within the same contiguous zoning code as was suggested in the May 28 memo. And I'd like to also, number two, continue with improving our zoning codes with Shenmore. And three, to pursue the architectural pattern book prices and move forward with that and to continue working on landscape improvements.
That's too complicated.
DeeDee, you wanna make another motion, please?
Yeah, I would continue the zoning in progress to allow council, the time to get input from a consultant regarding-
All right. Hang on, guys. We already have a motion that was seconded. So we gotta have to do a roll call on that motion.
The motion was DeeDee's original motion to, for a consultant to provide options, go out for a consultant to provide options that are less restrictive.
Okay. Go, you wanna do a roll call?
Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Yeah, turn your mic on. Thanks.
Nay.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Motion fails, two to three.
Okay, DeeDee, go ahead.
I'm running out of ideas here. That, that was my best foot forward. I just wanted a consultant to look at it. I don't know what else to say. If, if no one wants a consultant to look at it, then we're just chasing our tails. I mean-
Let me make a couple of comments. Len, you need to give us more guidance here because when we talk about, I heard, just heard, you know, new zoning codes, you know, we can't do new zoning codes. There is a restriction on that. There's a restriction on doing anything more restrictive. So please, when these, when these come up, these motions come up, that you, you know, let us know your feeling on them as we go through them.
Look, I said my piece on that. I, I don't think this is the greatest idea. I know John disagrees with me, but I mean, I suppose there's a scenario where you could clearly make it less restrictive. I just don't know what that looks like. I, I, I really don't know what it looks like. I, I understand the, the harmony and yes, potentially that could be less restrictive, not more restrictive, but these, these metrics or these criter- restrictive, but these, these metrics or these criteria or whatever they're gonna be, I don't understand how you're gonna, you're gonna say, well, these are less restrictive. It's just a tough argument to make because of Senate Bill 180.
Everybody understands what Len is saying. Coming up with any of these metrics is gonna get this town in trouble, and if you guys want to go down that path and continue putting metrics in that Len has advised us not to and that staff can't, is not supposed to implement, I need, we need to know that because we need to figure out a solution. They can't move forward. We know they can't move forward.
Well, can I query Frank for a minute? We just got today the John Stelludo memo that you sent out, and you said in that memo, and I could be quoting it wrong, but if we continued with the preponderance, you would not be able to build a second story. So I think what John is saying is if we amend our harmony language to, and you might not be saying this, but if you amend the harmony language to compare the buildings or structures within the same contiguous zoning code and take out that word, preponderance, then that's less restrictive. And then we could look at guidance policies and options such as the architectural review book and the pattern book and those kind of things that a consultant could help us with, that could, that we could find some sort of incentives for them to do or that is less stringent than what we apply right now or less restrictive or burdensome per 180, and that there would be options there to move forward in that way.
My response to that is, actually answering your question with a question, is less restrictive than what? We haven't codified anything.
But if we're codifying. That Stelludo memo and preponderance.
If we're codifying, if we're saying less restrictive, would it be less restrictive than base zoning? Because that's already your.
If I may interrupt something.
Yeah, I, well, let me finish. The idea thought is that right now, our words for harmony are in 34-1163B2, and it has that language comparison of structures within 300, preponderance of the structures within 300 feet. And you implement that through guidance or policy that's not codified, but we've been doing it for the last year, no one challenged us, and it's resulted in large homes that have been approved. And so it's that guidance or policy that we went through at the workshop on May 2 that you would be amending to make it clearer or less restrictive or adding optional items that would, that like architecture and landscape is those types of things that wouldn't necessarily be prohibited by Senate Bill 180.
So I believe we have been challenged on one of them. And again, it's, the, removing the preponderance part of it just makes the pool bigger. But what are we following? We're following mass, bulk, scale, proportion, landscaping, orientation, and so on. If I'm not able to use specifics, metrics, then what am I comparing it to? If I'm comparing it to the maximum of what base zoning is, anything that falls below that is going to be more restrictive.
So I thought that with those tables that you make, that I appreciate, and I think they're great, where you're comparing it to the other homes in the same zoning code, that that gives you your comparison, but then that's.
I'm being told that I can't do that anymore.
Yeah, but, no, you do that, and then you have the test from the, and so then you say, well, Len just said you can't have hard, fast rules. So then the test is, then you go to option two. Maybe you do more landscaping, or you do the architecture, or you do something like that, and it's not a pass fail based on a measurement because you're given these other options, but it gives the town flexibility to, you know, ask someone that's coming in for a new construction project to make that project fit better within that community.
So that is what staff was doing. And remember, we had the May workshop where we heard that that wasn't good enough by our residents. We did have option test one. You don't meet it, there's a test two. And there were at least two instances where the planning and zoning board, even though we recommended denial, they had staff go back and try to work out with the applicant if they could do something. And that was the other components of landscape and this and that. And for one, I believe we told them you could do an additional 5%. They wanted to do 10%. At the end of the day, they came back. But me trying to implement those, in my professional opinion, would still be more restrictive than what base zoning is because those were not codified.
And 180 attaches you to August 1, 2024, and that's what we're doing right now. So it's not, don't do harmony or do base zoning because we already have harmony. So you're, you're in the bucket already for that. Do you see what I'm saying? You're not comparing harmony to base zoning. You're comparing what was in effect August 1, 2024 under Senate Bill 180.
We go back to, to whatever happened before May. The residents being unhappy, I mean, that's the reason why we had the May workshop, that because that's what staff was doing for the last year.
All right, I'm gonna, I don't understand why we're pushing this. We're trying to be attorneys, we're trying to be planners. It's clear that they're saying that if we put more restrictions in, it's not gonna work. We're gonna get sued. We're gonna get sued on many levels. Why are three of you pushing this right now? What is the goal? That you don't want bigger houses right now and you wanna stop that? Why is the guidebook and the pattern book something that you wouldn't look at so that the town doesn't get sued? Nobody wants the town to get sued. I don't understand trying to work around something like this when the fact is, staff is telling you, they're sitting there telling you every time you come up with something, they're saying to you, council's saying it to you, town manager's saying it to you, but still you guys are pushing, trying to do something that won't work probably, and we will get sued. And you're gonna have to answer to your residents, why are you doing this? I don't understand it myself.
I can explain it because it's the will of the people in Juno Beach. They want something done, and we've talked about that over and over. And Mayor, you said the challenge was to us, that you three voted against it, it's up to you to come up with a solution, but you insist that you wanna dominate this conversation.
Not true, John. I'm saying that.
I would like an opportunity to try to do that.
Well, I think you have, and I think they keep pushing back on you. And when do you guys come to the conclusion? We can't do this all night. Please try to come to a conclusion on what's more restrictive. So if you wanna write down, let's make this restriction, this restriction, that's fine. And then they're trying to tell you that's not working, what you're saying. I'm not trying to stop you. I'm just saying, let's try to get it, something moving.
You're obviously in opposition to anything we say. So let us talk, just be quiet, and we'll, we'll get there.
I'm not in, well, I mean, we can't delay this for not, for the whole night, and just listen to what the attorney is saying and what staff is saying is all. And take note of it, and you keep coming back to the same thing. Let's make more restrictions. We're reiterating the same thing, so go ahead, John.
Thank you. DeeDee, I didn't get a chance to explain my opposition because I wasn't given an opportunity to speak before the vote was called, but my, the nature of my opposition to what your motion was, was that it was too complicated, and Diana's things were too complicated for this evening. But we do need a path forward on where to go, and I think we can give the staff direction on where we would like them to go. And I think the direction should be to work on this solution and come back with a recommendation that is in general agreement with what we are saying here, that we don't wanna go back to base zoning. We like to see a path forward where we can modify the language in ordinance 780 to be more in line with what the council at the time intended. And see if there's a way forward, and they staff, and don't, not use a consultant to do it, but have a staff do it and allow them to reach out to a consultant if they'd like to, have them reach out to the attorney, a different attorney, whoever, you know, their in-house planning professionals, and come back with a viable path forward or the least troublesome path forward for us to consider at the next meeting. That's my, that's my motion, to have staff come back with the best option that they can have to move forward with modifying the previous ordinance to make it more, less restrictive.
I'll second.
Do I have a second on that?
Yes, I'm seconding your motion, John.
All right, discussion. Rob, do you wanna?
Sure.
Diana, the staff part.
I'll chime in for a moment. I think staff have done a great deal of research on this already, and what delivered us to this point in time is the product of that. So it's kind of like trying to go back to where we were in August of 2024 and repeating everything we did to where we get here and expecting a different outcome. So you can't keep doing the same thing over and over and expect something else. So I think this is a waste of time because staff have already undertaken this exercise, and if you want a consultant and want to fund a consultant to try and overcome the legal counsel advice that you've been given about you can't do more metrics, you've got staff telling you they can't implement it without the metrics, I can't direct my staff to say, come back with a miracle solution that doesn't include metrics, even though you can't evaluate cases without metrics, and talk to a consultant to see if they can find a way to pull that rabbit out of the hat. It's just not going to happen. It's an unrealistic expectation, and I think from a zoning in progress perspective, Len needs to provide some guidance because to get zoning in progress, this isn't a moratorium where you have time to study alternatives and come back with solutions and vet them and, and talk for three or four meetings. This is, you have to have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Len, very clear direction, which is why when you go back to the May memo, we bullet pointed very clearly every step because Len cautioned us, you can't have zoning in progress unless you know exactly what you're gonna do. Are you reducing the side yard setbacks by five feet, the second floor by 25%? Things like that. And I don't know how on earth there's a reasonable notion amongst our council that you guys can do that right here, right now, yet at the same time, we're confronted with the need to do it right here, right now. There is no sending staff to do more research and consult with consultants and maintain zoning in progress, which leads to the question that I presented you guys with back in May, what are we gonna do tomorrow? And it's an impossible situation you're placing staff in. This whole idea that we're doing something potentially that is less restrictive than preponderance is based on a false understanding of how we were applying preponderance. That memo that is being held up as, look at what you wrote in here, Mr. Stelludo, can't do a second story addition, was never being done. That was a worst-case scenario. If we applied it as discussion by council was occurring, then yeah, maybe we're less restrictive than that, but we never applied it that way. It was never, that's a fallacy. We applied it using the metrics, which we've now learned can't be done. So that argument of retreating isn't there. So I think to Len's point, you guys are at a juncture of either, A, you're gonna come up with some real metrics that our team can use to review requests for improvements, or, and you're gonna risk whatever his potential consequences are in doing that, or you're gonna go with option one, because absent clear metrics, we've told you over and over, we can't do it. So to suggest over and over through these conversations that there's some magic bullet, the silver bullet that's gonna kill the werewolf, you know, I don't think that's, that's gonna happen. So help us to help you guys by giving us a charge and direction that we can actually implement, not just pretend we're gonna do something and come back and have the same conversation over.
Fair enough. Diane, if you want to say something?
I believe the directions for the zoning in progress for the single-family homes RS1 and RS2 can be remove the architectural review from single-family homes, have P&amp;Z staff as a final authority, because if we're not gonna do architecture, we don't need an architectural review board. And for the harmony, amend the language as was proposed in the May, in the June 28 memo, comparison of the buildings or structures within contiguous zoning district. And then while this is going through, it's gonna take two months to do this because you have to change the language, and while you're doing that, ask Shinmore and Associates for their suggestions, since staff has worked on this really hard. And Shinmore was already agreed, council had already given the direction to go to Shinmore and do these different code improvements, and some of them were sound and slow growth, which this fits within that, and then the floor area ratio. And while we couldn't adopt those into the codes because of Senate Bill 180, maybe there's some innovative way that we can use it as guidance policy or some way to encourage, encourage moving forward with what Shinmore states.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the problem with that, Diana, is the staff does not feel that they can go forward in that manner. And as the town manager said, he believes that they cannot operate under those, those guidance that, you know, I suggested, and I'm pretty sure he'd be opposed to the path forward that your suggestion. So if they're not willing or don't believe they have the capability to do that, I think that's a dead end for us.
Well, that's why.
Unfortunately, but the staff, the manager did say, give us the metrics and we can do something with that. So I think the ball's in our court to come up with those metrics, is the staff does not feel comfortable or whatever reason for doing those metrics, and I think we can. The reason we're here tonight without any more than 48 hours preparation is we just got this memo from Len. If we didn't get this memo till tomorrow, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. So we don't need to do something right now because we got a memo on Monday. But my suggestion of a way to go forward is to put it on the next council meeting as a discussion item, and then we can have, we can decide what to do then, or a special meeting if it's too long into the future.
May I?
Go ahead, DeeDee.
This is exactly why I was suggesting we at least hand it to a consultant, because if staff doesn't feel comfortable, if they've extended all of their thoughts on this and they can't pull any more rabbits out of their hat, why not just give it to a third party to troubleshoot it? Maybe they'll come back and say, look, we can't help you. It's too much of a legal risk, there aren't any mechanisms to help, and that's it. But why, why are we trying to solve a problem? It's like an escape room, and we don't have the key, and we're not letting somebody give us the key. So there's no, nothing wrong with asking for help, and that's why I made the motion that I made. So let's give it to somebody else, bring it back in 30 days, and, and that's, that's it, you know, because I guess I'm not convinced, and, and I don't, I'm not convinced that the base zoning is the best thing, and I'm not convinced that these options, one or two, are the best thing. If, I mean, I'm looking at what these options are, one or two, right now. I mean, it's just ridiculous. I guess it's, it's just ridiculous at this point. Either we use a consultant, you know, so, so Rob, I get it, you're telling us we need to come up with metrics? I'm not prepared to come up with metrics. This isn't my area of expertise. How do you think the five of us are supposed to, you know, what, take a crash course in land planning or something like that? This is why we need a consultant, so I don't think it's fair to put it in the council's lap and say it's our job to give the staff metrics. This is why we hire professionals who didn't give us the metrics in the beginning, or we wouldn't be here discussing it for 100 hours already.
The professionals have given you guys recommendations, and you've rejected them, and your legal counsel has suggested to you that the three people who refused those recommendations need to help us move forward. So this is not a question of whether you have professionals, you have them, but you're ignoring them.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and I am gonna put my two cents in, John, even though I'm not coming up with metrics. What staff is saying is that you cannot put metrics in because they're considered more restrictive. That's what everyone keeps saying over and over. And so coming up with metrics, DeeDee, and having someone else come up with metrics, they can't do it because it's gonna be more restrictive. I'm not saying they can't do it.
I don't think that was conclusive. We don't know conclusively that, that any, there's nothing that, like John said, there's nothing that says that a definition has to be more restrictive. There could be more lenient definitions. We just have.
What's a more lenient definition? Give us some examples of what you're talking about. Oh, you're off. We can't hear you, DeeDee.
Like John said, we just got this memo two days ago. I don't have time to, I'm not having the tools to create these formulas. And I think it just seems like a very black and white option, and I guess I'm a gray kind of thinker, and it just seems to, I guess that's why I'm stuck on this. I'm not trying to intentionally be difficult, and I certainly don't want the town to get sued, but it just doesn't seem that there should just be this either or, and that there's not something, some mechanism that combines the best of both worlds. And I don't, I don't know what it's gonna take for me to, to be convinced that. Regarding that pattern book, I mean, what's the cost of that? Are we gonna spend $50,000 or $100,000 on, on creating this?
Are we going to spend $50,000 or $100,000 on, on creating this book? Then, you know, we're going to, look, we're already saying that investors and builders, they want to build to the, to the maximum that they can. Why should they care that we should, oh, look, here we have a book. We want you to put in little trellises or something. What, what should they care? They're, they're not here to satisfy us. If they're, if there's no obligation, no legal obligation or, or no codified obligation, I think it's going to be a big waste of money. We're going to have this pretty book that we're all proud of, but no one's going to pay attention to it because they don't have to.
But that's assuming they're all developers too, and it's not. These are our residents. These are our homeowners.
But we don't know that. We, that would be an assumption that we don't have an answer to. So I guess one of the, the things is if, if the builders, let's say the houses on US1, even the houses at Ocean One that people said look like Legos, some of the houses in, in Diana's images there, if, if people really cared about what the houses looked like that they were building, whether they're builders, investors or, or residents, then we wouldn't be in this place because we'd already, people would already be building these kinds of things that were generally appealing. And council never would have put this in place thinking that we were solving a problem. And then we really did, we thought we were solving a problem. We didn't ultimately solve the problem, but that was our intention. So like John said, there was, there was a problem that was trying to be solved. It just got, I don't know, screwed up.
Okay. So our staff needs a direction and our council or our residents need a direction. They can't be in limbo wanting to apply and waiting for someone to go out to a Shenmore or something like that. Does?
30 days, right? Is, if, if, I would like to ask John, what's your, what's the problem with going to a consultant like a Shenmore that could give us options? They have engineers on staff, they have landscape architects on staff. I mean, they have a wealth of knowledge that could potentially help us come up with some metrics that would not be more restrictive or burdensome.
I, I don't know how long the process would take to get a consultant on board, number one, but.
Hold on, there's a motion on the table.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but I have been, I haven't spoken for 45 minutes.
Okay, hold on, there's a motion on the table.
Presentations to a dialogue between two council members. And I, I would like to say something too.
I'm so sorry, Mary Ann, so sorry. There's a motion on the table, right? And what was the motion?
The motion was made by Vice Mayor Callahan to have staff come back with the best options to move forward.
Did that get seconded?
Yes, that was seconded.
Okay, you want to do a roll call?
Can we further discuss?
Let's discuss this for a second. Because I, this is not a zoning in progress, just saying, oh, let's have a consultant look at options. That, we, we can't enforce that. So what are we going to enforce in the interim?
Well, we already have a zoning in progress.
We do.
First, what we have, what we're going to do, you know, last Friday before your memo. It, it, it stays the same as far as.
Well, there are things we can't do. Well, we, there's three elements of the zoning in progress that we can no longer do because it's in a bill 180.
But they don't require us to immediately convene a council meeting and change course. No. We, we, we get, we get a breathing space to decide how to handle that information, Len. As you said in the last time, the legislature doesn't expect us to jump through hoops. We just got your memo two days ago. We're not under the gun to, you know, dispense with it tonight.
Len, can you answer that question so that, I know John answered it for you, but go ahead and answer that question.
No, I'm saying you can leave the zoning progress in place, but.
Are we going to get sued for that? Because I, we don't have anything to back up that zoning in progress, correct?
Well, there are certain elements we can still move forward with, but if we're not moving forward, it's not a zoning in progress anymore, so.
What is the legal, what, what should we do here? If it's not a zoning in progress, we can't just say, oh yeah, we'll just go ahead with it just because we, we don't have a solution yet. We need legal to tell us. Can we continue the zoning in progress?
I mean, look, you can continue the zoning in progress, but again, we can, now we could get challenged on that, saying that, well, well, now we're denying people the ability to move forward with their applications.
Okay, so that's.
And we haven't provided clear direction as to what we're going to do, but.
All right, Mary Ann.
We can still move forward with the three things that we can move forward with.
Mary Ann?
You know what the problem is? In my eyes, we have professionals here, a lawyer who tells us what to do. We have staff who have degrees in planning and zoning, who have certifications, and we doubt them. We don't believe them. I don't know. I mean, I believe them, I trust them. And we think without any kind of expertise in that field, we know better? I don't get it.
Yeah, okay, I agree with you, Mary Ann. Go ahead, Diana.
I, I think we should, I would make a motion to move forward with option two.
Wait, we've got a motion on the table, so we're going to have to do, do a roll call.
I'll conduct the roll call.
Say the motion again, just so everybody.
The motion was made by Vice Mayor Callahan, seconded by Councilmember Halpern, to have staff come back with the best options to move forward, such as amending the current ordinance and making items less restrictive.
Thank you.
Can we, can, I would like a clarification on that motion because it's a motion to continue with, with harmony as per 34116.
You seconded it.
3B2. No, DeeDee seconded it.
DeeDee seconded.
That just needs to be the clarification because the staff coming back with options is coming back with options regarding the harmony review.
You want to clarify that, John?
For single family homes RS1 to RS2.
Even though staff said that they don't have any more rabbits to pull out of the hat? John, do you want to keep your motion going? Is that the, an active motion or you want to withdraw?
I, I don't understand the clarification.
The, you said to have staff move forward with options. The options that you want staff to look at are ways to clarify the harmony review of 34116, 3B2 for RS1 through RS5 zoning codes.
Yes.
So you want to amend your motion to that, John?
I'll, I'll accept the amendment.
DeeDee, you want to second that one or you want me to second it?
I, I do need to clarify something. It.
Failure of a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
It, it's not RS1 through RS5. We're talking about single family homes. There are single family homes in other districts other than single fam, the RS1 through RS5. So it would be for the youth, single family in the zoning districts within the town.
I thought because it didn't apply in PUDs and other things, that, that's why you had to say RS1 to RS5.
No, for example, the picture that you showed on Ocean Ridge, that's in the RMT zoning district, so that's not a PUD, that's a single family home. It just has a different regulation, three stories, 40 feet plus a tower structure.
If you said RS1 to RS5 plus RMT, would then that be?
Uh, no, because then we also have the residential, the duplex that although the purpose of that is to do a duplex, you can still do a single family home in there.
Okay.
So it's for the youth. That's in Coqueta Avenue, that, that little area. It's a handful of homes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'm sorry, what?
Turn the motion.
Okay, withdrew the motion. Did we have another motion on the table or somebody was going to do one? No? Okay.
Well, I, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
Simplify my motion. I'll move that we ask staff to come back with the recommended, with, with the available options for next meeting with their recommendations on which way to proceed.
I'll, I'll second.
And actually, we don't even have a staff recommendation. We got, we got a memo from the town attorney. That's all we have. We have discussions with, with the town manager. We have discussions with here. This will give the staff time to spell it out in detail, the available options and the recommendation course of action for next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All right, discussion. Rob, do you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to note that leading up to now, staff conducted a thorough analysis of the options available. They consulted with our legal counsel. It was determined that we were rather limited in the options that were available to us. Council voted on those options, which is exactly what we're talking about doing all over again, but we're just saying redo what you did and come back with something different. We just won't know what. And we're bounded by SB 180 where we can't make new metrics. We're bounded by the fact that our staff has already said and said again and again that they can't do it without the metrics. And yet the direction to staff is an impossible job to go back and do what you already did, but just come back with something different than what you did last time. We won't tell you what it is, but give us a path forward. This whole conversation since it started is apparently not being listened to. And we're instead being told to just go back and try again and, and bring back some new metrics that allow you to implement harmony with the metrics that you need to be fair, simple, clear, predictable outcomes, all of those kinds of things we've been talking about. I would suggest to you that you need to give us an assignment that we can actually do. Because we don't want to come back in 30 days with nothing that moves the needle and just have this conversation all over again and have more power points and more arguments back and forth and more stuff about staff not being professional and, and all the rest. That's not a productive conversation. We need something more meaningful that you're looking for so that we can actually put our finger on the pulse and say, ah, we get what they want. Oh, we understand that SB 180 allows us to do this. We understand that town council is okay with litigation exposure. Let's say for the sake of conversation, that town council tells us, don't worry about litigation. Come back with the best way to control the size of houses that you find nationally. What is that going to be? That's going to be something more aggressive than what we had at the last meeting. And certainly, beyond any reason of doubt, is going to violate SB 180. But that's off the table. So what are you guys asking us to do? Because one, 30 days isn't a lot of time to bake up a whole new set of recommendations that are in any way meaningfully different from what we already put in front of you. And engaging a consultant and giving them the task is probably a pretty tight window for 30 days. And Len, I know you said we can continue zoning in progress, so I don't know what that means for applications coming in. They just sit there and we tell them nothing because we don't know what the rules are. Your zoning in progress is a moratorium because we'll take your application, which is different than a moratorium maybe, but we're not going to tell you what we're going to do with it, when we're going to do with it or anything else. Just thank you for your application and our staff will get back to you at some point in the future at an undefined point in time with whatever the new regulations may be at that point. It's untenable. So help us to help you guys. This is not a viable solution either. So give us something at least that we can be responsive to.
Do we have a motion on the table? Okay, we need to clear the motion first, unless there's more discussion on that motion or if the motion wants to be withdrawn. What was the motion again?
What if the motion?
I could, I can go back to discussion, but I'm just looking at the clock. It's 8:20, we have a whole agenda. We don't have time to formulate that, Rob, to give you that, what you're asking for. You're asking for too much. The, we cannot, the, those five, five of us cannot come up with what you're saying that you would like to hear from us in anything short of a few hours. So that is not viable tonight. That's my issue. And I understand it's not the best way to go forward, but it's a way to get onto the next agenda and have something on board for next council meeting.
So maybe the motion is not to direct staff to come back with something that they've already presented and discussed.
I, I wasn't a motion. That what, you're, you're rewarding my motion.
Okay.
My, let me tell you what my motion is. The staff to come back to the available options that the council would have, not, not that they're all viable, not that they're all smart, not that they're all legal, risk free. Just list them. Just list them on a paper, what they are, the pluses and minuses, the pros and the cons from the staff of the available paths we can take. And then with your recommendation on which of those paths we should follow. And I think it would be clearer for all of us to narrow this discussion down on our way forward at the next meeting.
What do you consider available paths? Are we constrained by our legal counsel's advice or are we to say that there's no limit as to what recommendations we make because we've already done this? That's what I keep saying. So if you would like us to just recirculate the May memo and we can talk about it again, but if you would like to expand the scope of potential alternatives to include things that we have been explicitly advised are illegal under state law, then we'd be happy to bring that back to you. But I think we know the outcome of that from a legal counsel perspective. Staff can do that. What I'm sensing perhaps is we're just trying to allow ourselves, council members, time to compose our thoughts and come back and debate some more. But let's not frame that as an assignment to staff unless you want to tell us what the boundaries are that you're looking for. Again, if, if legal constraints are, are off the table and if consideration of litigation is off the table and you just want us to pepper you with a myriad of potential options that include areas that traditionally would be off limits for staff recommendations, and then tell you the same thing that we told you before, it's our recommendation, we can do that, but tell us that's what you want. Because I don't want to set staff up to fail by not achieving what your expectations are or setting you up for very bad conversations by suggesting to you that there's alternatives that we know aren't alternatives. It, it's kind of a.
I have a question.
This pretense of creating alternatives that don't exist just for the sake of coming back and letting everyone talk for a few hours about them. So help us to narrow it down or describe what ability you want us to, you want us to give you bad recommendations and then say they're bad?
I'm not saying we're restrained. I don't, I don't see where, where Len's memo is definitive in that it's our legal things. I'm saying in his opinion, it could be seen by a court that be violated as SB 180, but that is no means definitive. And I think personally, Len is not guaranteed to be 100% correct. I think there's a few ways of looking at this. He's saying it might be considered illegal by a court, but you never know how a judge rules. So it's not definitive. We're not, they would be included. Those paths where we go forward and risk a challenge as one of the available paths, yes.
Okay, so to illustrate, we could come back with the recommendation on restricting FARs and lot coverage and things like that to constrain the size of development below what our base zoning allows in a way that is more restrictive than any way we've ever interpreted our laws in the past. And you guys are okay with that coming back as an alternative?
Absolutely, yes, because it's less restrictive than what's the, what the code is presently allowed as far as preponderance. It is less restrictive. You're comparing it to base zoning, which no longer applies. Base zoning does not apply. Preponderance of the homes is what superseded base zoning, and that's the thing to compare it to.
But for the fact that preponderance has never been applied in the.
Regardless of, I'm, I'm not saying who applied it, how they applied it. I'm just saying it's in the code as preponderance. That is the code and it supersedes base zoning already.
I understand.
Whether or not the staff is agreeing with that or they've applied it, I don't, I'm not even addressing how they've applied it.
May I clarify something on that? Is that staff did do that exercise already. We provided it to council. That's why we had the direction with the zoning in progress. At that time, we were not aware the Senate Bill 180 was going to go through, but it was in the back of our minds. But the reasons that we provided that second floor setback, the floor area limit and the landscape and only provided those instead of the big list that we gave you guys was because of the Burt Harris claim. So that's something else that we would still have to give you and, and let you know. But we have done that exercise and that is the memorandum that we gave you, I believe, June 28th. We, we, we looked at FARs, we looked at setbacks, the sightline, sightline visibility. All of those were looked at, they're in the memorandum. And out of all those options, we provided you those four that, that we had.
That's, I believe the May memo, correct? Not June?
Yeah, May memo, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I'd like, go ahead, Mary Ann, and then I'm going to.
You know, I'm just amazed how nonchalant some people are about lawsuits. If in my mind, there's a 10% of the lawsuit that could hit the town, I would rather avoid that situation. And you said that, that you are afraid of, and even DeeDee mentioned it. She said she would not want to cause lawsuits coming to our town. So can we look at it from that perspective, please? And maybe DeeDee is the more, the most flexible of you three because John is doubting it, Diana doesn't really worry about it, but I'm worried about it and the mayor is worried about it. And DeeDee admitted she does. And DeeDee admitted she does not want any responses. You don't want to be responsible for any lawsuits coming to town. Think about that. So I think you are the person who could change your mind.
And I just want to mention that, John, just a second, DeeDee, I'll come to you. John, for you to say that anything staff proposes will fly and not be challenged is a fallacy. Those metrics that they were using were not approved by council. They, council didn't know about them and they're not codified. So I think that's the wrong attitude to take. It will be challenged. So I think you really need to understand that no one's going to accept the fact that somebody put metrics in and we didn't codify them, but staff was using them and council didn't know about it.
Staff operations don't supersede council ordinances. Once the council puts an ordinance in, that, that goes regardless of what the staff decides.
Those metrics were never in the ordinance.
But they weren't.
No, so that was not an ordinance.
I agree. The restraints weren't
But they weren't codified.
They have no force of law.
Right, but you're saying that if you do anything that's below those metrics that they were using, that it wouldn't be challenged and we're not going to get lawsuits. I don't think Len agrees with that. I don't think any other attorney agree with that. And I think we need to be very careful about what we're doing. We're putting our residents on hold and I think that's the sad part. But let's see if this motion flies.
The motion is not to fly in the face of lawsuits or take any action. The motion is for staff to bring back options in a memorandum explaining this. At next meeting, if we decide to go that route, you have a valid point, but we're not going down that route right now because it's too murky on what it is. We need more time to, to discuss this and, and that's my motion. It's not to make any decisions on which of those options to go right now.
Okay.
And just one last part on conversation before we actually take the vote. Len, if, if this were to pass, what do we do tomorrow in terms of development applications? Because that's an important question is, are we accepting them? Assuming, let's, let's say for the sake of conversation, this moves forward in the positive and we get that assignment and we execute it to our fullest stability. What does that mean for a development application when it comes in tomorrow?
And so, you know, I do have either one or two already on hold because of the zoning in progress and we're in conversations with maybe four about it already.
Look, unless the zoning in progress is lifted, it's still in effect. I'm going to throw another wrinkle in this whole thing because this is, I just don't see this as productive anymore. So look, Senate Bill 180 goes through October 1, 2027. Well, 2027, yeah, well, never mind. The one thing I didn't inform you of is that I did receive an email yesterday. I did send it to Frank and to, to Rob, that the wife's road law firm is contemplating challenging Senate Bill 180 on multiple grounds. I know that probably doesn't, because who knows when that would be resolved and it really doesn't solve our issues, but I just wanted you all to know that fact.
All right, Len, what do we do with the zoning in progress? You said we can get sued if we don't remove the zoning in progress?
The problem is, right, the problem with the zoning in progress is, I mean, you can, there's still certain parts of it that we can move forward with. So we could say, hey, we're still moving forward with the parts that we're moving forward with and trying to figure out the rest of it. But it's looking more like a moratorium than a zoning in progress at that point.
So if, let's go ahead and do a roll call on this motion. And I want another motion made that, so that it's on the record. Who wants to keep zoning in progress in place?
I had an additional question for staff.
Oh, sorry, DeeDee. Go ahead.
A question for Frank. We were talking about in 2021, the, I guess, the previous, before the preponderance sentence was added. So between 2021 and 2024, staff approved new developments using the sentence harmony can be achieved through proper consideration of setback scale, mass, bulk, proportion, overall height, orientation, site planning, landscaping, materials and architectural components. And then it said, including but not limited to. My question for staff is how, if, if there's this complaint that this is like so subjective or, or restrictive, how for three years from 2021 to August of 24, was this implemented successfully?
That language wasn't until 2023.
2023 and then 2024 is when the 300 foot got added.
Okay, so we're going to narrow the timeframe. So then from 21 to 23 for a two-year period, did we or did we not approve new development using this language?
Right, but at that moment, as, as we mentioned before, architecture was the main review that we were doing. So number one, instead of number two of the appearance review. And then that's when the, we were told that we cannot longer do that because it's building design elements. And then also, you know, throughout all of that, we were also doing site plan review. So there were a lot of things that we started doing back in 2021 and little by little, it kept getting changed. That's why we had so many amendments on this specific section of the code since 2021 to today.
So some houses did get approved with proper consideration of setback scale, mass, bulk, proportion, height, orientation. Let's leave out the architectural part. Were houses approved?
2024 and moving forward, yes.
But not prior to 2024, no single family homes were approved with the consideration of setback scale, mass and bulk?
No, that, that language wasn't there. So at that time, we were using base zoning. We were looking at architecture and we did have multiple applications that were not denied, but where the applicants pulled their, their permit, I'm sorry, what was the actual word for that? They withdrew the application while they were doing their presentation. So we did have concerns with that. We had the same issue with site plan in the very beginning, but no actual denials at that time. They just withdrew their application so that way they would be able to come back and, and try again with a different change or modifications.
All right.
Well, since, since I am up here, I just wanted to mention that when we had previous direction on moving forward with the architectural pattern books, staff did reach out to consultants to figure out what the cost would be. It came back ranging from $46,500 all the way to $73,800. And it would approximately take about four to five months for them to do that. And we used the, the example from the village of Tequesta that they had for theirs, which is very detailed.
When did you get that price?
After you guys gave us the, we started working on getting ballpark figures after you guys gave us consensus with the zoning in progress. Yes.
So it was like recently?
Yeah, yeah, yes. All of this is recently and it is a ballpark figure that we're, that we're getting from them, just so that we know how to move forward with our purchasing policy and, you know, do we have to do an RFP or what the case may be?
And, and a question, thank you, a question for Len about the lawsuit challenge to 180. Is that going to be one where municipalities all join in or Len, could you?
Yeah, they're, they're looking for municipalities to join in. It's similar to what they did with the Form 1, Form 6 issue and they were successful on that one.
Uh huh, so we could join in the lawsuit and fight.
Well, whether we join in or not, I mean, if it's decided in the favor of the municipalities, we still get the benefit of it, whether we're part of it or not.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. You still want discussion, Diana?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I handed out Nancy, Nancy, Attorney Nancy Stroud memo on Burt Harris type challenges. And I, I gave everybody a copy and I hope that it can be part of the record of the meeting. I'm sorry, DeeDee, I didn't give you a copy, but.
That's okay, I understand.
And I'm going to make note that I do know that there was someone that was going to sue the town had their house not been approved through planning and zoning as it was presented. So there's both directions.
Red assert because those are completely
Yeah, I don't know for sure. Marianne, your, your light is on. Do you want to say anything? Nope, okay, so there's a motion on the table. Does everyone remember the motion?
The motion is to have staff come back with available options and a recommendation for a course of action at the next meeting. I'll conduct a roll call. Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Your microphone, please.
Nay.
Councilmember Halpern?
Can I abstain?
No.
No.
What a nightmare.
Think of the lawsuits.
Well, we're going to get sued in 30 days?
Possibility.
Anything's possible.
Well, people, I mean, obviously the people who are making the public comments were, I mean, those, some of those comments were threats or veiled threats. I would, it sounded like.
I wouldn't agree with that, DeeDee. I don't think that's fair to them.
You don't think?
I don't think that's fair to say that.
All right, I, I sort of perceived it like there was something in the works or somebody said there was a lawsuit pending, didn't they?
There's people with applications, that's the issue. We have.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to say aye and let staff bring back something else and, and not just options that, I don't know.
Motion passes through to.
Okay, so now we need to understand, even though that's passed, I'd like to have a a motion made on if council wants to keep the zoning in progress. Somebody want to make that motion, even though they know the ramifications to keeping the zoning in progress? If not, I'll pass the gavel and make a motion. I need, I need a record of who wants to keep zoning in progress, even though council has, has told us that we should not keep zoning in progress because of the possibility of a lawsuit.
So let me, I don't understand. So now, or maybe I do understand. If we voted to have it come back and we get rid of the zoning in progress, it means that applications can continue to come in. There's just which way?
They would come in under the current standards because that's what we have in place, which.
So there's no reason why, if you want to restrict, they would come in under the same Harmony 780. But we have to, we have to let staff know what we want to do with that. So I'll make the motion again because the motion failed. So probably need to get a second on it next time. Do we want to, we need a roll call on keeping, who wants to keep zoning in progress? Do you want to keep zoning in progress, I guess, is the motion.
That sounds like a question.
No, do you want it, do you want it? No, I shouldn't say, excuse me, I'm going to amend that. Do we want to rescind? Len, is that the correct words?
It's to lift it, whatever the case.
Zoning in progress. And I'd need a second on that.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, so based on that, then everyone wants to keep zoning in progress in place?
Can I ask a question?
Even though we've been warned.
Well, the zoning in progress was put in place after the May 28th memo. And the May 28th meeting was very interesting because we had a vote to, there was a motion to repeal ordinance 780 and that motion failed. So the town council majority agreed to keep ordinance 780 in the harmony review. However, the May 28th meeting goes on and it gets rid of harmony. And it says, instead of doing the harmony review, that's the 341163B2 for mass, scale, bulk, proportion. Instead of doing that, we're going to do those upper story setbacks. So now we have the memo that we received a day ago that says that you can't do those upper story setbacks. So, you know, we need to know that that takes us back to the harmony review because otherwise we have a zoning in progress for something that we're not doing. It, so anybody that comes in, they say, well, this is the council's latest direction, but it's not really what we're doing. But in my mind, if we agree that this motion to go back to staff is to review harmony because we still have that in place, then the zoning in progress could be final authority for staff on the appearance reviews that we still have and, and then working on these harmony criteria.
All right, that was just a statement, right?
No, it's a question. So zoning in progress, is it towards the second story setbacks or is it zoning in progress to work out what the, the criteria for harmony?
Well, the zoning in progress that's in effect right now is in accordance with the May 28 recommendations from staff. Now, still, there are still components of that that we can move forward to. That's getting rid of architecture review. That's returning review to staff and whatever the third one was. What?
So you can make the motion?
And the pattern book, thank you, Frank.
Do you want to make the motion again?
Well, it's got to be somebody that voted against it. So go ahead, Diana.
Well, I'd make a motion to rescind the zoning in progress that anticipates moving forward with this May 28th memo that's now impossible to move forward with because of Senate Bill 180.
I'll second. Oops, pass the gavel.
So if you rescind the zoning in progress tomorrow, we can start setting applications, but they're going to be processed under the current rules?
Under what current rules? Are we going to use the metrics that, that Steve, that, that staff was using to interpret these undefined terms exactly as they were with the multiples of the average and all that, all that stuff? If that's it, I mean, I'm just asking if that's what we're doing.
We're going back to the review. I mean, look, I'm not in favor of the metrics, but we could still do all the statistical analysis and determining bulk scale mass, you know, I'm not in favor of hard and fast tests, but it's back to the appearance review criteria in whatever form that is.
It would be the hard and fast test is what we were doing. So that would be if we go back to that, that is what we're doing absent any direction to the contrary. Because if we go back to what we were doing, it's the hard and fast test as a means to actually quantify what those words are intended to do.
DeeDee, do you have a discussion on, there's a motion on the table, so.
Yeah, my discussion is can't we just get rid of the 300 feet and then it's less restrictive? And it's within the zoning district. So you could say, consider the preponderance of buildings within the same zoning districts. So now it's less restrictive. If we get rid of the 300 feet, which is a big problem.
That's what you'll talk about next month. This is about getting rid of zoning in progress, which was A, B, C and D, which we can't do.
So can't we have, I don't know, an addendum or something that just strikes that language, recognizing that that is causing calculation issues?
I think that has to be another motion, right? I mean, I don't even know if they're I think you guys need to, it needs to be discussed. I mean, if you've got three council members that will take that away, I guess you could make another motion after this, but the motion on the table is to rescind the zoning in progress.
Okay, then I agree with that.
So we have to do a roll call?
One question. Does that expose us to potential lawsuits?
If we kept it, it would, but now we're going back to the metrics. If we, so the thing is, if we keep the zoning in progress, that was the seven, the five foot setback, that was the 75%. We can't do that now. It's obvious we can't do that. We need to get rid of zoning in progress 100%. I mean, to me, maybe some of you don't agree with that.
What does staff recommend or the town manager or the, our attorney? What do they recommend?
At this point, we're waiting for council direction and we're going to do whatever we're asked to do and do it the best that we can. We've provided recommendations, those were not accepted by council. Council has asked us to start, what I'm hearing so far, and correct me if I'm wrong, to go back to using the standards that we were using, the metrics, continue to evaluate applications on a continuing basis using those numbers. And at a future meeting next month, we are to recirculate our memo with the work that we'd already done, but maybe surface some more of those options that were taken off of the table and just say, here's what they do. We were told they're not permissible under SB 180, but council wants to proceed with talking about them anyway, so we'll bring them back. We'll explain to them what they are and show them as alternatives, even if according to our prior direction, they aren't viable alternatives. But we will recirculate the memo and flesh it out a little more and go back to the metrics.
You could do that? I mean, you are in favor of this?
As it was just described, yes, we, we can provide you that memorandum. Honestly, the only concern that I have is the 30 days. You know, not, I'm just not the planning and zoning director. I also do code enforcement. We also do flood plane. And as you are aware, it's only Stephen and I for the department. And it's been that way for the last month and it looks to be that way, at least for the next month. We are in the hiring process. We did do an offer letter. You know, we're hoping for a start date soon, but even that person, they got to have training. So 30 days is very tough with everything else that we're currently doing. But can I deal with the town manager? What can I do what the town manager just mentioned? We can provide you that memorandum, we can give you the options that we provided before, and just clearly state what a setback is, how that would impact, you know, give you , uh, different criteria that we currently have right now, and, you know, pros and cons to those.
If we're lifting the old zoning in progress, perhaps we do a new zoning in progress, just getting rid of that harmony, the preponderance language, and going with the contiguous zoning district. Because then at least for the applications that come in, we don't have, we're not, look, we're back to the metrics, and I understand that, but at least we're not, we get rid of that preponderance language. If, if that's moving forward, we can start applying that to new applications.
And, and I would make a.
Comment that.
Well, there's a motion on the table, DeeDee, let's get through that motion, and then you can make another one. Go ahead. Councilmember Halburn?
Point of order. Caitlin, why are you calling a roll call? We haven't had discussion on this.
I did ask for discussion. So I thought we had discussion, sorry, John, go ahead.
You had discussion, but you didn't let me speak, and I'd like to, so.
Don't, don't get rude, just say, I'd like to talk. You didn't let me talk.
Well.
Okay, go ahead.
I understand you're in a hurry and like.
No, I'm not in a hurry, everyone needs to talk, but just say, could I please talk?
Yes, oh, it's the green light is. Okay. I'm opposed to any more discussion on harmony, and I think you're all making the case for a special meeting. These things are complicated. We need time to talk about each and every one of them. Just call a special meeting and we can do this. But we have a deadline of ten o'clock tonight, and we can't keep going on the iterations of, of every aspect of harmony. So I'm voting against it, because we do not have to settle it tonight. We can't have a special meeting, and that's where we should go.
And we're on zoning in progress, and whether we should lift that or not. That's, that's the motion on the.
I'm voting no.
Okay, that's fine. Do you want to do, everybody else, any other discussion on zoning in progress? Okay, roll call. Councilmember Halburn?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta? Microphone?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Callahan?
Nay.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes. DeeDee, DeeDee, do you want to go ahead and make your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend, I'm trying to get to the page here, amend number two, whatever that is, amend the language in, what would you call that? I don't know what you'd call, how you'd describe that paragraph. What, what's, um, I guess, set forth in section thirty four dash one sixteen of the town code, I'd like to make a motion to, um, amend that, or edit that paragraph, and delete the three hundred feet, so that the paragraph reads, for the purpose of this section, the comparison of harmony between buildings shall consider the preponderance of buildings and structures within the same zoning district.
Wait, I thought we were getting rid of preponderance. Preponderance is problematic.
Okay, so the building.
The former one was, was just, um, the buildings are structures within the same contiguous zoning district. That was the prior recommendation.
Okay, the comparison of harmony between buildings shall consider the buildings and structures within the same zoning district.
Correct.
That's my motion. Do I have a second?
No. After all that work.
Motion fails for lack of a second. All right. Are we finished with discussion, motions with? All right, so we're moving on, then, right? Hopefully, you had direction. I do want to mention that the, the first ordinance for the definition of harmony was approved in July of twenty twenty-three. The second one with the three hundred feet was approved in January of twenty twenty-four. I just want to clarify those, those dates, so everybody has that. All right, now, we did say that we were gonna do a nine o'clock council comments, but we do have to get through the budget very quickly. Can we move that, John, to nine fifteen? You know, Emily will be very quick. Do you have any problem, anyone with that?
I move we have a special meeting.
For the budget?
Everything that we can't cover tonight, because we're not gonna cover it. We need a special meeting for it.
We need to do the budget tonight, though, correct, Emily?
I need to approve, I need to have the millage rate and the public hearing date approved no later than August first. So we have to by July thirty first have town council approval of those things, so I can certify them August first.
Can we get to that really quickly, and just approve the, the minimum millage rate and the dates?
That's the maximum.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, maximum.
Can we do that? And, and we can.
Do whatever gets a majority of the votes, but I, I made a motion to have a special meeting if there's no second.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Um, we should talk about having a special meeting, where we have more than eight minutes to talk about our mill rate.
All right, does, does anybody want to, I, there's a motion on the table for a sec, for a special meeting. I, I don't know how we can, I'm sorry, discussion. We don't know when the special meeting's gonna happen. Is it gonna happen in August? I mean, we don't know the dates that everybody's available.
Well, obviously before January thirty first.
July.
And the special meeting?
July, or July thirty first.
July, you said January.
Right.
I can't, I can't do it before July thirty first, so.
Next Thursday.
Can we do it the next week, August fourth?
No, we cannot.
No, we cannot, it has to be certified.
Why can't we just set the millage rate and, yeah, we can.
Well, that you can do.
Yes, but to discuss the entire budget, you think that council comments are more important than our budget, John? I just, I need to know that, because I think we should be doing the budget.
I'm in favor of doing.
Last time, we didn't get the council comments at the meeting. We ran the whole meeting over on a reconsideration of harmony. So I, I do think council comments are important. We just can't, you know, chuck them off the agenda.
No, okay, so can I have a, a roll, a consensus on whether we should be doing budget or going into council comments, please?
I'd like to know how much time Emily needs to do the budget.
Yes, me too, because Emily, I have seen, uh, your work, and it was so excellent, and I know it, it deserves more attention than just being rushed through.
Um, I, I will say, we are doing an additional, um, whole presentation in August as well, so you will get another version of what I'm planning tonight, definitely in August. Um, it's up to you guys. I envisioned I probably would go through the presentation, that would take twenty plus minutes, and then, to be honest, I thought I'd be answering questions for a couple hours. So, um, I can do a very quick presentation, and then you guys can vote on the millage rate and the public hearing date, or you can schedule another meeting between now and next Thursday.
What, what, what would you prefer?
It's not my preference, it's, it's up to you guys. I, I'm open to, to you guys.
So we do have the opportunity in August again to speak thoroughly with, with Emily in the public as well.
I would go till, I, I would, yeah, I'm out of town, um, I have this medical issue with my family member, so, um, I'm not gonna be that available. I would go till nine thirty tonight and allow Emily to proceed with the budget. And then a half hour.
Is that okay with everyone? We'll start council comments before our budget, I guess?
I guess it's a compromise.
Not start, not start council comments, let Emily go first, and if we have from nine thirty to ten o'clock.
Okay, I, I, let's, let's do that. Do we have another consensus on that? We need one more. Okay.
Are you gonna vote on my motion to have a special meeting? No. See, we had a motion, Diana seconded it.
Yeah, true.
Motion to make a special meeting, could we have a, you know, discussion or vote on that?
I'm going, well, the discussion still is, I don't know dates, and I'm not gonna be that available. I have to go move my daughter to Indonesia. I'm not going to Indonesia, but I have to move her out of New York. So, I will be gone for a while as well.
When are you leaving, Peggy?
Tomorrow, early.
That soon?
Yeah.
All right, let, let's do the budget. But can we have a, a special meeting in the middle of August to cover the rest of this? So can we have two council meetings in August?
We could, we could do that. And there is a motion on the table, so that's a reason I'm gonna say nay for the special meeting. Any other discussion before we do a roll call?
I would have a, a special meeting, but I would do it in, in mid-August before the other council meeting.
Well, we don't have a date yet, so I'm, that's why I'm gonna vote nay, because we don't know what the date's gonna be. And we can talk about it at council comments too, if we want. Go ahead and do the roll call. Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
What, are we voting on?
Having a special meeting?
Aye.
Councilmember Halburn?
I like it so much.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Okay, so we're gonna move on with Emily, and she's gonna go ahead and start. We got a consensus on that, correct? I wanna make sure of that. Consensus on Emily starting, and we'll stop at nine thirty. You got a hard stop there, Emily. Go ahead.
So just to confirm, do you guys want me to do the full presentation, or do you want me to do a simpler version, so you have a little bit of time to talk? Because nine thirty is, you know, thirty minutes.
I, I wanna know what numbers changed from the first budget to the second budget. You know, we got a second group of budget, yeah, so I wasn't clear what changed.
So I would go through the, the faster versions to have questions, if everybody's in agreement with that. Do we have consensus for that? Make sure everything's, yes, Mary Ann, John?
Yes.
DeeDee? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, faster version.
Okay. The goals for tonight's meeting are setting the millage rate for the fiscal year twenty-six budget. The millage rate can be lowered at a future meeting, but it cannot go above the rate that we set tonight. So we need to set the official date and time of the first budget hearing. Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty PM is staff's suggestion. We are unable to have it on Tuesday the ninth, or Wednesday the tenth, due to conflicts with Palm Beach County and the school board. If September eighth does not work, September eleventh at five thirty is the backup option. Staff is recommending a millage rate of one point eight one nine five, which is the same as the prior year and the last couple years. The millage rate will generate approximately four point six million in property taxes, which is an increase of about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. This is based on an assessed value of two point six billion dollars in property, which is an eight point eight five percent increase above the prior year. The assessed value includes the newly annexed area of Captain's Key. The overall budget is eleven million, one thousand eight hundred and two dollars, which is two percent, or two hundred and sixteen thousand higher than last year's budget. Staff is not proposing a millage rate increase for fiscal year twenty-six. However, it may be necessary in future years if we aren't able to increase revenue in other ways. This is just a slide showing the millage rate history. Um, as I said earlier, the one point eight one, one point eight one nine five is staff's recommendation, and this would be the fourth year that it would be at that rate. This is a slide showing all of the millage rates across Palm Beach County. Um, the green is Juno Beach, and I was just showing that we have the lowest millage rate of all municipalities in Palm Beach County. This is an example that calculates the property tax raises for the individual, um, a single family home or a condo, based off of, um, some current average taxable values I calculated from the property appraiser. Um, the increase for a single family home works out to about a hundred and forty-three dollars or twelve dollars a month. Condo, a hundred and nine dollars or nine dollars a month. This is a slide just showing the increase in the assessed value over the last ten years. This is a slide just showing all of the preliminary taxable values, um, across the county. Um, I have it sorted by highest taxable value to lowest. So this just shows that we're probably about the fifteenth highest municipality in taxable value. Oh, and one thing I wanted to point out on this slide, if we did not have the new construction and the annexation of Captain's Key, our property values would have only gone up five point six seven percent. So eight point eight five includes the annexation and new property. This is a slide showing the revenue fund budget. As I said before, the budget is currently at eleven million, one thousand dollars, one thousand eight hundred and two dollars. Some of the highlights of the revenue budget, we are planning to go out for an RFQ for an investment advisor to increase our investment income for next year. The sales tax, SRTX, sales tax, SRTX ends twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. It was not continued by the county, so that will be ending, and, um, we will be losing that revenue. We're only gonna get about a hundred thousand in the next year. Grant revenue reflects the two grant projects we are expected to actually complete in fiscal year twenty-six, which would be the JB Zero renovation and the vulnerability assessment. Um, the current budget includes using the remaining one point two million dollars from the SRTX reserve to fund capital projects. It includes using two hundred and seven thousand from restricted funds towards capital projects, and includes using nine hundred and sixteen thousand from reserves to fund the fiscal year twenty-six budget. Other revenues are consistent with prior years. This is a slide showing the legislative and finance and administration budgets. Some of the highlights of the legislative budget, we have moved the town attorney fees into the legislative budget. Um, we thought, because the town attorney works directly for the town council, it was appropriate, and it was just easier to see if everything was together. We've also moved the contributions into the legislative budget, because that is directly, um, voted on by you guys, and we follow that direction. There's some small increases in operating expenses. For the finance and administration budget, we're proposing adding a new position to the town clerk team, a front desk associate. We're proposing adding a new position to the finance HR team, another accounting specialist. We have combined all the IT services into the admin budget. Previously, it was split with other departments. Um, the consulting fees, that is a large number in the finance budget, includes the hundred and fifty thousand that we still have to spend to complete the vulnerability assessment, as well as the hundred thousand for the Safe Streets project. Those, um, will be, we have the budget for the expense that we're actually going to pay in twenty twenty-six. Projects overseen by the project coordinator slash risk manager have been moved into this budget, because that, this is the department that she is in. Um, some of the capital project highlights, Kagan Park Playground, South Litoral Shelf, and JB Zero. This is a slide showing the comprehensive planning, AKA planning and zoning budget, as well as the law enforcement budget. Some of the highlights of the comprehensive planning, no longer, we are proposing to no longer fill or fund the senior planner position. Um, the current budget includes a hundred and fifty thousand for master plan implementation, once the master plan is completed. Um, it includes forty thousand, forty-five thousand for a hybrid comp plan EAR. Um, I understand I have a typo on here, it's required every seven years, I think per len, not every five years. Five two seven? Okay. Okay, five two seven, for Frank. Um, it includes fifty thousand for CRS consulting. However, I think we've gotten an updated figure that we can, should be able to reduce that in the new draft that we propose in August. Some of the capital project highlights are a hundred thousand for an emergency operations center architectural work and feasibility study from the building reserve, and adding an electric car charging station here at the town center for the town's electric vehicle, and hopefully future electric vehicles. Some of the highlights of the law enforcement budget, negotiate, negotiations with the police union are still to be completed. We're hoping to make some good progress before we come back in August. Um, we no longer are budgeting for any consulting fees for accreditation services, because all of that work is now being done in-house by staff. We are expecting an increase in dispatch services from Northcom, and capital projects are two hybrid marked police vehicles, some scheduling software, and some fleet maintenance software. This is the public works budget, as well as the general government budget, which just shows a couple line items that aren't one department specific. Highlights of the public works budget, uh, increased focus on preventative maintenance, increased level of service for landscaping. We've got twenty-five thousand in tree trimming, twenty thousand for televising the stormwater system. Um, we're expecting an increase in FPL bills of about three percent. Some of the capital projects, repaving Universe Boulevard, replacing one of the work trucks, getting a sidewalk sweeper, some light replacements, replacing the ace, two AC units here at the town center, the one that is responsible for the AC in this room, as well as the one upstairs. Um, doing some air louver work at the Public's Work Building, it's not, uh, exactly an AC replacement, as well as, um, sidewalk paver repair, and money to return the US one median to two thousand and five plans. Highlights of the general government budget, we are no longer budgeting for contingency. Last year, this was six hundred and fifty thousand. Our plan is our budget, and we will work our plan. If an emergency happens, we will pay from reserves. Overall highlights, um, the current budget includes that we would be increasing town staff by one position, there'd be one less employee in comprehensive planning, and two additional staff in finance and administration. We are planning to use the remaining SRTX funds in fiscal year twenty-six. We are planning to use the remaining SRTAX funds in fiscal year twenty-six. If the town council were to change any of the capital projects that are in the green area in the top, you know, we could move those into future years. That's something to consider. And staff will continue to review the budget over the next month and look for additional opportunities to cut costs and other ideas. We've already came up with a couple changes since I, you know, submitted this last Wednesday. We, the budget work will continue, you know, all throughout the month. This is the capital projects schedule. We don't really have time to go about, go over in depth. But the green area is the projects that are going to be funded from the SRTAX revenue reserve. The purple area is projects that are going to be funded by restricted reserves, which is currently either the building reserve or the police reserve. And the items in the blue are funded from normal general fund impact fees, things like that. There's... Some capital projects highlights, Kagan Park, JB Zero, repaving Universe Boulevard, the Emergency Operations Center, architectural work. These are some of the large future-year capital projects. I just wanna make sure it's on everyone's radar. The potential, you know, construction of emergency, emergency operations center at the town center, replacement of the town center generator, replacement of the town center roof in a couple of years. Some additional repaving projects based off of CPI ratings, a future renovation of the Public Works complex, and a large police radio infrastructure and radio replacement that we will have to do in the next few years. The town's unassigned fund balance policy is to maintain a minimum balance of fifty percent or six months of the operating budget. These funds are needed in case of emergency. Let's get it. So as of last year, as of nine thirty, twenty twenty-four, our unassigned fund balance was sixty-six percent of operating revenues, or approximately eight months. The, if we used every single penny in the current twenty twenty-five budget, it would be to sixty-seven percent or eight months. Over the next month, I will be doing a projection to see where, what I think we're going to stand at the end of this fiscal year. And then I will be able to give you updated figures. We also will be proposing a budget amendment at the August meeting. That is, the town's current practice is normally at the August meeting, we do a budget amendment. This is the contribution list. Historically, the town council has approved this with a motion. It doesn't have to be done, but I, I think it's been a point of interest in prior years. The contributions are currently listed as the same amounts as they were last year. But like I said, it's, it's not like a requirement. It's more a, I think, a town council preference that you guys have specifically approved this. So this is the COLA, which would be two point three percent for town staff. I spoke to the prior finance director and confirmed the exact method and exact number that he used. So it is the south number for June that gets released in early July, so just showing you exactly where the number came from. These are the pay ranges. So these have been the minimums and maximums for each pay range have been updated by that two point three percent that you saw on the prior slide. These are some of the future steps. So at the next town council meeting, we're going to be going over another draft of the budget. And perhaps in an additional meeting, depending on what you guys decide. September eighth, if that's the date you guys choose, we would be having the first public hearing. September twenty-fourth is the date that we would be having the second public hearing. In conclusion, staff is gonna continue to refine this budget over the next month based on feedback, feedback from the town council and residents. And we're gonna look for additional ways to cut costs and, you know, additional improvements in some of the estimates. Another draft will be presented in a month. So this is the part with the motions. I need a motion to set the general fund budget tentative at the lower millage rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six at one point eight one nine five mils, or a number, another number if the town council selects, for the first public hearing and scheduling the first public hearing for Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty, or another date if the town council selects. The other two motions are not required. Those could be skipped due to time.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed millage rate of one point eight one nine five mils for fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and set the first public hearing date for September eighth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM.
I second that.
I'll conduct the roll call. Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Could we have discussion or is that prohibited?
You can go back and do it.
I mean, I hate to keep bringing this up, but I think, you know, when there's a motion and a second, I think the next step in the process, Caitlin, is have a discussion on the council members. And I don't think it's your decision to call for a roll call before we have that discussion. I think that's the mayor's. But that's why I'm asking the mayor, could we have discussion?
Well, I think, do we have to go through the roll call now? Or we would fail. So we could, why don't we let the motion fail at this stage? And then, John, you can go ahead and have discussion on it. And we'll just remake the motion then Diana went after he's finished.
Okay.
Is that okay? Do you wanna rescind the, the motion, Diana? I guess we have...
Yeah, I would withdraw it.
Withdraw it. Go ahead, John.
We've had all about six minutes to, to discuss the budget. I think the mill rate should be a little higher, just to be on the safe side. So that, once we go through the details, if we have to leave it there, we have the ability to do it. And we can always cut it back to one point eight one. So my, my preference is to leave it a little higher, leave it at two for now, because we don't have the time to delve into this. And just for the fact that we're gonna have a special meeting, we can go over this. We should leave it a little higher for, in the meantime. I'd love to see it at one point eight one, and I, and I mentioned that to the manager, that's my preference. But looking at the situation, we don't have time to discuss any of the details tonight and it's nine fifteen. I'd leave it at two. Thank you.
Can I ask, this is the minimum, one point eight one?
This is the maximum.
The maximum.
We could always go down.
Yeah. We cannot go up after whatever you set.
Or you'd have to notify every taxpayer in the town.
Okay. Do we want more discussion? Dee Dee?
My question is, I, I asked Emily this, but I don't have the numbers in front of me. What is the dollar amount? I'm sorry to put you on the spot. What is the dollar amount increase that the town would take in by changing the mill rate to two mils?
I think if we went to two, it would be about five hundred thousand. I think we would have to go, you know, yeah, about, about five hundred thousand.
Versus what are we taking in at one point eight one?
The number, all the way on the first slide, hold on.
It's on the first.
Four point nine...
I'm looking for it.
Four million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars.
So how much is that a difference? Mary Ann, can you do the math?
I think we would generate about an additional half million if you set the millage rate at two.
Yeah.
Generate an additional half a million?
Yes. I think that was your question.
I guess my question then to, to Stafford or John would be, what would that money be earmarked for? Because I don't wanna just raise the taxes and not have a goal for the funds. I don't know if staff or, or John, do you wanna say what you think that we need that money for?
Go ahead, John.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Halpern.
Welcome.
We're not raising taxes. This is just the maximum mill rate at, that we could always lower, raise lower. But it's for the uncertainties of, that might come out of the budget. I have a sense that the town council in the past has tasked the town staff to do more than they're capable of doing. And we need to rectify those two things because I don't think they can get all those things done with the money available to do it. And I think the choices will be to cut back on their, our expectations of what they can do or raise the money for that they can do that jobs that the council has given them.
Thank you.
I just wanna make sure council is aware that they budgeted in two additional staff employees. As long as everyone is aware of that, that's already been budgeted in, correct, Emily?
Yeah, the net increase of one is budgeted. The reduction of planning and zoning of one and the two additional employees in the finance admin department.
Okay.
Can I ask, is, are the two new proposed employees, are they gonna be able to be funded at all from permitting fees? Like Isabella's position was, then it... Okay, so...
No.
So then is it two and a half employees budgeted? Whereas, because part of Isabella's was from our permitting bucket. So from, from the general revenue is actually more than just one employee, correct? We probably just need those numbers.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't say it was two and a half. Per my review of the calculation at the end of last year, I think forty percent of that position was paid from the building permits. So...
Okay.
You know.
Any other discussion?
I would go along with that as a maximum rate, understanding, you said we can always lower it. So I, for argument's sake, I would, I would go along with a, a two mil maximum and then have further discussion on expenditures and things like that.
Mine might suggest we go one point nine eight, just perception. I don't think it's gonna make that big a difference, but anybody have a problem with that?
I would accept the amendment. I would accept the amendment by the mayor.
To one point nine eight?
That is the maximum rate. We can always lower it back down to one point eight one nine five. Do we have, do we need a motion on that? Who made the motion before? Diana? You did.
I drew it, though.
Yeah, could you make another one or John make one?
I, I'll, I'll make a new motion. Do we set the mill rate to one point nine eight?
I'll second.
And set the public hearing date.
Okay, I'm sorry.
One point...
One point nine... I make a motion that we set the, the mill rate for one point nine eight mils for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six and set the first public hearing date for September eighth, two thousand twenty-five at five thirty PM.
I'll second.
Go ahead and do the roll call. I think we're ready. I don't want to jump on Caitlin for this. I think we're ready for a roll call, Caitlin.
Councilmember Hosta?
You're suggesting higher? John?
Yes, one point nine eight.
Where did you get that number from?
Where did I get it from? From the mayor. I suggested two oh and she said, could you lower it to one nine eight? There's some, there's uncertainties in the budget. We don't have time to discuss. So let's just play it safe and leave it a little high. We have a police negotiations that are not completed. And there's a lot of questions in this budget that we haven't even touched on.
Mary Ann, it doesn't mean we can't go back down to one point eight one nine five. So we can always revert back to that if we all wanna do it.
It's a new move for me, you know, to, to increase taxes, you know, and to voluntarily do it, you know. It's, it's just psychologically, I feel kind of, okay, if you all go for it. I mean, Emily, it will not be complicated for you, right?
No. No, it's, it's just putting in a number and updating, you know, it across the spreadsheet.
We started the roll call, or not? Cause, do you wanna, we're still in discussion. Can we just still be in, okay, so you're finished with the discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just shocked.
Yeah, and I'm gonna just mention, I, I think we are, you know, except for the problem with the reserve and that we are drawing down some reserve, I'm probably gonna try to stay within the one point eight one nine five. I, I, you have put money in there for the police negotiations, correct?
The police negotiations, the, no, we've not put additional money in there for what we, for the police negotiations, which...
I, I just wanna bring something, if I can, just part of the discussion.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I'm probably gonna hold at the one point eight one nine five. But go ahead and we can, ready? No more discussion? We can do the roll call.
I have one, a discussion if I can.
Go ahead, Dee Dee.
Yeah, my, my concern is, you know, storm preparation and things like that. We see how federal funds are being reduced. And my concern is that we should try to raise. Now, I'm not saying I'm not against lowering it, but I think raising some funds just in case of a catastrophic storm wouldn't be the worst thing. So I'm, I'm thinking in terms of storm damage and the town's potential, maybe to not get the FEMA funding we need or other assistance, because some of those programs are being reduced at the federal level, even the state level. So that, that's my concern, is storm prep and recovery.
Okay.
Okay, my concern was that we will no, no longer have the SRTAX. But, you know, I find if we increase the miller rate and say it is because of losing the SRTAX and we mentioned it already, we prepared the citizens for that, it would be a better approach. Like saying the council raised the miller rate, although staff did not suggest it. It's kind of a weird scenario in my perception.
So your vote can reflect that if you want, but now we're gonna start a roll call if there's no other, no other questions. And Caitlin, let me just say, Kay, I told Caitlin to start that roll call, so I think you hit on her, so that was on me. Go ahead, Caitlin.
Councilmember Halpern?
This is for the one point nine eight?
Correct.
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Pro Tim Davis? Microphone?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Mayor Wheeler?
Nay.
Motion fails two to three.
Okay, we, now we need to motion for the date at least and to set it at one point eight one nine five, please.
Microphone?
I make a motion to approve the proposed millage rate of one point eight one nine five mils for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and set the first public hearing date for September eighth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern? You have a microphone?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
All right, so we have five minutes. Do we wanna ask questions for Emily for a couple of minutes? Or is it gonna get too in-depth and we just start council comments? What would you prefer to do, council?
We had all the agenda items, didn't we? We have council comments and then what?
Technically, we have a, a SRTAX agenda item right after the budget. I, I do need to send a letter to them talking about our proposed projects. But really, it's just gonna be a list of what's currently on, in the green section in the CIP. And we're not held to it. We can change it. But, you know, that would be preferred to have your approval.
When is that due, Emily?
Technically, it's June, July thirty-first.
Okay, so we do need to make a decision. Did you move the six eighty-three on the repaving over to twenty twenty-seven? Has that been corrected or you didn't?
That has just been something we've discussed individually with council members, but it hasn't been done. But we could easily just make that modification and say that's not in the twenty-six, you know, list of projects.
Does everybody remember the conversation I think Rob had with all of us about, you know, being able to check the CPI on the road and make sure that that's the, the most in need that you, that Universe Boulevard is versus some of the other roads that we have. And that way, we have an opportunity to do that.
I, I have data that I've requested that I haven't received for, that's related to the, our, our capital improvement projects. For instance, I wanted the list of depreciate, fixed asset depreciation and then the vehicle inventory for PNC Police and Public Works. And I haven't received that yet.
I, I can get that to you. I've just been extremely busy.
Oh, I understand. I know you've been really busy, but I feel like I can't make those decisions until I have more data. Can we do it at the next meeting?
No, it's due July thirty-first, she said.
Oh, July.
She should have it in...
They would much prefer we turn it in on time. I, I don't know if there would be any real negative repercussions if we turn it in late. It, it's an oversight board. It's not a, you know, regulatory agency of any sort. But, you know, historically, we approve it in, in June or July. We send... But, you know, historically, we approve it in June or July. We send the letter. And then they have a meeting at the beginning of August to review everyone's requests. But again, the requests can be changed. You could cancel things. You can even add things. They just need some sort of plan of what we're planning with the SRTAC funds. But we're not held to it, so.
Then we could just go ahead and approve it as is and knowing that we can change it at the next meeting.
You could. We could send a revision.
Positive.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation to approve fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six, one cents discretionary SRTAC project list and submit to Palm Beach County League of Cities Infrastructure SRTAC Citizen Oversight Committee as requested.
I second that.
I would like to amend the motion to remove the Universe Boulevard project or put it on two thousand twenty seven, the repaving. Can we make the motion with a stipulation for that item?
I don't disagree with you, Dee Dee, and who made the motion, John? You did. Do you mind amending that?
What's the advantage? I don't understand why we, what's the advantage of doing that? When Emily said we could always amend the list later anyway, what's the point?
When would we amend the list? Would that be at the August meeting? I guess I would rather start with a clean list or in a clean motion than amend it later on.
No, I think in that large item, I might agree with you, Dee Dee.
The reason why I think the Universe Boulevard needs to be put to two thousand twenty seven is there's a good chance we could get grants from the T P A for that and/or other monies. So I don't think it needs to be prioritized in twenty six. I'd like to see grant funding for that.
Do we need a motion on, amended motion then? John, are you willing to do that? Or if not, well, no. No, we've got a motion on the table with a second, don't we? And so we need to.
I don't believe there's a second, so I'll withdraw the motion.
There is a second. There is a second.
I did, yes.
Okay, Mary, I'm sorry.
All right. Can you withdraw it, though? Can you still withdraw that even though there's a second? He can still.
He can withdraw it if the secondary agrees.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll withdraw the motion.
Mary Ann, is that okay with you? You have to approve that.
Okay.
Okay, and then do, Dee Dee, do you want to go ahead and make the motion? Thank you.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the one cent SRTAC list to be submitted to the Project Oversight Committee from Palm Beach County League of Cities, with the exception of the Universe Boulevard repaving project, which we would move to the two thousand twenty seven tax year.
I need a second on that.
I second that.
No discussion? All right, roll call.
Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Nay.
Councilmember Hasta?
Aye.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one.
All right, so we'll start. Emily, thank you so much. If we have time at the end of council comments, we'll see what happens. Maybe we could ask you some more questions because we've got, we've completed the items that we needed to complete. And I think we just had one agenda item from Diana. So we'll start council comments. We always work from that end over. John, I'm going to start with you, so, because I know you get the short end of the stick a lot of times.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have another item, I think we added to the agenda about talking about the town attorney situation. You know, we got a letter from the town attorney that we hopefully get to that after the discussion of the legal risks and the agreement with Seacoast Utility Authority. It's been pulled and rules of procedure. But under council comments, I'll try to be brief here. Two things I wanted to, you know, budget related, I wanted to bring up. And I'd like to defer discussion on them to a council discussion on these two topics. I'd like the council approval to have a discussion item at a future council meeting about our town communications. I think the town communications are wanting. I think a discussion is warranted and it has budget implications on carrying out some of these responsibilities. So my first ask is for a discussion item in the future. And like Councilmember Vice Mayor Pro Tim Davis has done, I'll do the memorandum in advance at a council and state the, you know, particulars on some of the things I'd like to discuss at that meeting.
I would give consensus for that.
Pardon me?
I would give consensus for that.
Well, can I get more clarification?
Consensus.
Oh, okay.
Can I get more clarification? I didn't quite understand what the consensus was for.
To have a discussion item at a future council meeting, the next available council meeting on town communications. Our newsletter, our website, our press releases, our social media and how we are perceived by the town, because I think we have, we can do much better.
Okay.
And I think there's an opportunity to do much better once we get citizen input. We talk about ourselves, talk about the staff members. And I think that I'll write a fantastic memorandum so that you'll really get excited and want to jump on board with this. And then we have to look at the budget implications of that. So could I get consensus to have that?
I've got one here, Diana.
Yes.
You've got consensus, actually, but Mary Ann and Dee Dee, are you?
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate the unanimous vote. Another quick one, and this is the last one. We have a problem with town records. We have what I consider a very large problem with town records not being available to town residents and the council members because they haven't apparently been all put into laser feed. And apparently, a lot of the town records aren't even able to be located. They might be at Palm Beach County over Palm Beach Gardens. And talking to the manager, it's not a technology issue or a software issue or a hardware issue. It's more of a time issue for lack of available staff time to actually do it. But I think there's an expectation among people in town that we have these records and they should be available. Gosh knows, Caitlin and Frank's been a lot of time just finding records and giving them out to council members. And these should be more readily available. To rectify that, I think I'd like to have, I would like to have a discussion on the next available council meeting to tackle this problem. And the gist of it would be, we'd have, we'd ask for volunteers that live here in town to help us out and do that work. We do need a volunteer coordinator, someone to coordinate that, to head, to, you know, to make sure it's done in the right way. But I'm certain of all the retirees, the average age is sixty eight, I believe, Juno Beach. There are plenty of people that like to do things, like to help. And my model of example is the, is the police department volunteer program set up by the police chief where people just volunteer at a time and for free. Let's let them do it. Let's let them scan these things in, put them in a situation and fix this longstanding problem. So I'd like to have a discussion at a future council meeting for that. Could I get consensus for that?
I'd give consensus for that.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it very much.
Is that it? I just a question with that. Is there a big impact to the staff for doing something like that? So we know.
I think if we had a coordinator who knows what's supposed to be done and how it's supposed to be done and supervised the volunteers, yeah, I mean, that's one of the options for, you know, getting to old archival records and bringing them into current technology would be have volunteers or a consultant, and volunteers obviously would be the most cost effective way to go.
Super, thank you. Diana, go ahead.
With my comments?
Yes.
Okay, I would like consensus to get data for the budget. So I want the fixed asset depreciation and also the vehicle inventory for P N Z and Police and Public Works. And I guess any other vehicles we have. Can I get consensus to get that information?
Yeah, I think we got that, the vehicles last year, Diana, so it's pretty readily, no, no, I know. It's probably readily available, so fixed assets, you just want a list of them, right? Just so I.
The depreciation schedule.
Yeah, yeah, that's easy.
Do I need a consensus?
Yep, probably, yeah.
No, I think you have a pending request and we can fulfill that. It's not something we have to create. It doesn't, it's just a matter of Emily having time to pull the document. So to elevate it to consensus is really just not a necessary action.
We're doing well, three for three here. Let's keep going.
Okay, so I need the cost for the two proposed new employees. And so the proposed salary and benefits. Can I get that information? And then I also wanted information about any negotiations with independent networks for providing insurance and benefits packages. So this would be a private provider. I know we had that discussion individually.
Could you repeat those? Just, we're going to go take one at a time?
Any negotiations that we've had with independent networks for providing insurance and benefits packages? This is like going outside to an independent provider. And I know that our employees that are on the state retirement plan can't do that. But it would be nice to see if a private provider could, could give us better health, you know, insurance choices, better benefits packages at a reduced cost.
So you're asking us to initiate contact with multiple vendors and maybe do an R F Q or R F P to get proposed price proposals and things like that?
Well, the back envelope, like you've done for all of these, you said that you couldn't go out for any of these with the R F P unless you had that proposal. So you're getting back at the envelope estimates, but they're better than a guess because you're actually asking the provider. So that would be the type of information I would want on this one.
Well, we just want to make sure that we're getting you what you want, so I, there's no need to be aggressive about it. Just explain to us what you're asking.
It's just, I didn't think that we had, you know, fixed prices on any of these, but.
Well, if all you're looking for is a glossy pamphlet from various vendors, we can do that. But what I'm hearing is negotiations, and that does not sound like a high level estimate. That sounds like we're actually negotiating pricing for benefits that, yeah, that would require.
Perhaps I miscommunicated. So call and find out, you know, what the sixteen or thirty two employees would be versus what we have now.
We currently have a broker that we have a contract with that does the negotiations. So I'm not sure if I were to go independently, if that would conflict with that. It might not, but we currently use a company called the Garing Group, and they are our insurance broker, and they negotiate every year.
But what about going to a private provider?
So this was the discussion I believe we had about, you know, whether or not the difference about what we could do with employees that are part of F R S as opposed to the employees that are not.
Yes.
More of our staff is part of F R S than not. So we would have, we would be splitting our health, we would have to have two different health plans in that scenario. And I'm not sure, it's difficult to get health plans if you have less than fifty. We currently only have thirty six. The budget, you know, might be proposing goes up to thirty seven. Splitting it into, you know, a twenty and a seventeen, I don't think would improve the pricing. But, I mean, it's definitely something we can try to look into, but I just need to confirm that, you know, it doesn't conflict with the contract we have with the Garing Group.
Emily, a private provider would probably be higher than a broker that's looking at all the different options. Because, I mean, are we going?
This is a pooled kind of thing and.
P O I, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, not private provider.
And then you get better, you actually get better benefits at a lower cost because you're going into a pool. But it would, somebody has to call someone and find out what that price is. So that's just what I would like to know for our negotiations, but for the budget discussions.
I agree. I think that's a good question. So like, let's say you called, I don't know what it's called, United Healthcare, U S Healthcare, Aetna, Blue Cross Blue Shield, you can reach out to several independent private providers and see what their rates are. But Emily, I'm not clear on why, why do you need separate insurance companies? Or why are the employees who are part of the F R S need a specific company? I didn't understand why we'd need to.
I could be wrong, but I believe when Diana and I were discussing this previously, I think we were talking about P O Is.
Yes.
And in that instance, the employees that would be part of that would work for that company. They would not be direct employees of the town. And in that instance, like I said, F R S, that cannot work. F R S, you have to be working for a local government. So that is the split between the non-F R S employees being direct employees of this other agency, and they're kind of rented back to the town as consultants versus the F R S employees, which is the law enforcement as well as to long-term employees that were grandfathered in that have to work directly for a local government or they cannot be covered by F R S. And that's part of the union agreement, so I don't think we can, you know.
What is this pool? Because now Dee Dee has said the same thing I said, the independent.
Well, the insurance pooling, I have it, is a collaborative approach where multiple entities combine their risk and resources to manage potential losses. So we would go to a private company that just does this for its, as its business, that they provide the benefits. And the strategy allows for sharing the financial burden, diversifying risk among a larger group and making coverage more accessible and affordable. So we could get our employees a better package, but we need to know what the options are. So it would be, someone has to look at the pooled insurance company. So that's what I would ask you to do.
Okay. Is that similar to piggybacking that we do for government now? Or is this an, can you answer that, Emily?
I believe P O I, again, is that the employees would then work for that company and they would be consultants here at the town. And that's how they get the benefits is because instead of having our group of thirty six or, you know, seventeen, they put the seventeen employees that were previously working for the town in with a thousand other employees from other groups. They all technically work for that company and then.
But we would still do their payroll. We would still do their hourly. I mean, we would still do all the things.
Technically, they would not get W twos from the town of Juno Beach. They would get W twos from that entity.
But everything else would be the same, except they might get better insurance and healthcare coverage.
There's probably other things I haven't had time to think about with like liability and other things. It's definitely a possibility, but that is, that would be a drastic change. That's, you know, something to consider.
And I don't know that Emily could return a quality analysis of that kind of a setup by our next meeting as you're requesting. So, you know, maybe if this is an idea worth investigating, it might be for like the next fiscal year just to allow enough time to flesh it out. Because on the surface, and I don't know anything about it, but it sounds pretty complex. And if, and if we are having our employees hired by an outside corporation, I don't even know like whose personnel policies apply and how that all works. So to ask her to come back and do everything else she's doing on the budget by next meeting with that is probably, I would say, not a viable strategy, but something to look at in the next budget cycle so that there's actually time to research all of that.
Yeah, well, we talked about it at the last budget cycle, but that was Michael and David and not you necessarily. So, but it is a potential cost saving and better and potentially better insurance products. The, I would like a cost per employee for benefits and insurance that we have now. And I would like to move forward with the strategic plan and feel like we need to pay Jim Karas for the work that he's done. I know that we all got a copy of his work in June, but I did speak to him. He said that he provided it at the end of April, as he was supposed to per his contract. And we, I did bring the town council vote that said we were going to move forward with the strategic plan. It's also the same council meeting where we voted to do fifty thousand a year for road repairs. So I also wanted fifty thousand a year for road repairs. Because I think if we're going to change policies like that, that they need to come back to town council and we need to have an agenda item in a vote. Otherwise, we need to go with what town council voted on previously and don't use the budget to change policy.
The fifty thousand, from my memory, that was from July two thousand twenty four. Rob and I both did not work here in July two thousand twenty four, so we appreciate you bringing it to our attention. And that is one of the changes that will be presented.
One moment, you said road repairs, and I think the fifty K we were talking about, we were.
Oh, sidewalk, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right.
Okay.
Yeah. But that is one of the lists, that's already on the list of things that will be modified for August. Like I said, we were not aware of that direction from July two thousand twenty four, so we will include that in the next draft.
And the strategic plan was also July. And the strategic plan was also July 2024. It's on that same town council memo.
The strategic plan isn't complete. He didn't finish his deliverables. He's been paid over $14,000 for an abysmal effort that fails to achieve the bare minimum standards for a strategic plan, and it is not usable for its intended purpose. I do not recommend to council that we pay him one penny more, and I do not recommend to council that we dedicate our staff time and council's time to clean up the mess that he delivered to us. Rather, we should isolate from the heap of text that he delivered to us, the garbage heap, the few good things that we can possibly consider implementing, and weave them into our budget discussions. I did direct our staff to do exactly that, and the budget as presented includes those recommendations and does not include others that included even more staff than what we've proposed in our current budget, just to illustrate one example, and not the communications. I don't know if communications is in there or not, but...
I think that also was in...
He had the finance and the treasurer's office, I mean, and HR expanding by even more, by two more people instead of the one that we're advocating for. So I think the best approach, and this, you know, strategic plan has probably been beat to death at this point, but the best approach is if council has things that they value that are in there and you see, bring them into the budget discussion, and let's prioritize them with everything else, so we get the benefit of the over $14,000 we paid him despite the fact that he delivered us a work product that is among the worst I have ever seen for a strategic plan.
I would like to get a motion to put the strategic plan on as an agenda item, and we can review the Jim Caris work and see how we could possibly move forward with it or decide that we wanted to grab it or make a different decision.
I would second that, and I would agree.
Discussion. John? You know, go ahead, discussion.
I would agree as an agenda item, but you have to write the memo.
Okay.
I was not impressed with the process we went through with the strategic plan. I felt like we were in a goal-setting meeting, basically, and we were writing goals, and I, the result, I was not impressed with that either. So I would not, I agree with the town manager on this one.
I have a question. Is he going to sue us for the remainder of the money we owe him?
I would be embarrassed if I were handed to sue us for a penny more, and let alone the fact that it would cost him more to fix the report as he would be required to if he sued us than what it's worth in terms of his time and effort. Because if he were able to and wanted to invest the time and resources necessary to prepare a quality report, he would do that. So if he chooses to sue, I would say we should require him to produce the report that he was paid for.
Mary Ann, can we have your thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. You know, there's something that bothered me ever since the last meeting, and it refers to you, DeeDee, a comment you made, and I'm sure you misspoke and you would like to correct it, because at one point you said you wanted a consultant to hire, and I think the town manager asked you, don't you trust our staff? And you said, no.
About what topic?
I think we're off course here a little bit.
Consultant for which topic, though? For the...
What topic? It's my, it's my comment.
No, no, I mean, I wanted a consultant for the harmony, you mean? I don't know what the consultant...
Diane, I'm sorry. You have been talking 30 minutes.
Okay, hold on, guys. So we do have to...
That's enough for her.
We do have to hurry up. You know, not everybody's had a chance to talk. We've only had two of you, so, you know, Diane, I do have...
At one point of time...
I also have to get a special town council meeting scheduled, you know, so we're short on time here.
No, that is not a very important idea. When some people take over the comment section and other sections of the entire meeting and are not courteous enough and polite enough to let people express their opinion or share, like in a cake, you don't get...
Okay, Mary Ann, we got to move on here, so Diane, you got a consensus.
And I wanted to say, I was very disappointed when DeeDee said, well, don't you trust our staff? And you said, well, I don't. I mean, I could clip this little...
Is this related to? I don't underst... Tell me what it's related to.
Just tell me. What it is related was your comment or was last council meeting? You wanted a consultant here, you know, the same you talked about today.
A consultant for harmony. You're saying a consultant to discuss the harmony?
Yes, and I think it was the town manager who asked you, don't you trust our staff?
And what did I say? You're saying I didn't, I said I didn't trust?
You said, no, I don't.
So I'm allowed to have that perspective?
I am speaking. Excuse me, please.
Except you're accusing me of something.
No, I'm not accusing you. I'm telling you what happened. And I wanted to, I was going to be nicer, because I wanted to give you the opportunity to say that you misspoke and explain why you misspoke, because words like that I listen to by the staff, and I don't want our council to get a wrong reputation. So would you please tell me what you meant by it?
Okay, we need to...
I would need to know which agenda item it was related to, and then I can address the comment.
Okay, I will get it for next time. But rather than settling it, we could, we'll do it next time.
But these are personal issues. If the staff has a problem...
Mary Ann, I'm going to stop now.
If you don't say state that you don't trust this staff, this is not personal.
Mary Ann, we need to stop. She'll come back to that. Take a look at it, DeeDee. Listen, stop, both of you. Take a look at it. You can, you can, you know, do it during council comments or not do it, whatever you'd like to do.
I don't know what... That's the town manager's job, is to manage the staff. You're not his liaison, so...
DeeDee, we do have a motion on the table for the strategic plan. I need a second if it...
To put it on as a...
There was a second, so we need a roll call.
Mayor Wheeler?
Is everybody got discussion? Nay.
Vice Mayor Callahan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Protem Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hosta?
Nay.
Councilmember Halpern?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay, we need, I'm not even going to go right now, even though I've got a couple of things, because I need that special town council meeting. And DeeDee, I'm sorry, you didn't go either. Do you have anything important? Because I can maybe come up with dates fast.
I did, actually, and it's back on the harmony topic, because...
We only have five minutes, DeeDee, because I know you can't see the clock, so let me go ahead and get the special town council meeting scheduled before it's 10 o'clock and we have the hard stop. And then if we have time, you can go ahead and say that. What are the dates for the special town council meeting? Somebody give me some dates of availability, so it would have to be, DeeDee, for you? Are you into August?
Yes.
Okay, any particular dates?
When's the council meeting? The 27th, we have a meeting?
It's actually the Tuesday, August 26.
We also, we have a special town council meeting already on the 6th.
Correct, just specifically for the master plan.
We could add it to that.
We could combine that. What about the 8th of August?
Friday's not good.
And let me ask what the special town council meeting is for? Is it specifically for the budget? And do we need it for the budget if we're going to be doing it at the end of August? Do you feel a need for that, John, now? Because that's what it was for originally, I think.
It's for the budget.
Okay, do you feel you need that special town council meeting again? Okay. All right, so August 8th. DeeDee, was that okay with you?
That's a Friday?
Yeah.
The 6th, meeting on the 6th, what's the time for that one?
What's the time for the 8th?
Pardon me, DeeDee?
The time for the 8th would be when?
We could do it, whatever's convenient for everybody. 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3, but we only have 2 and 1/2 minutes, so I need some fast talking.
I'm good on the 6th, on the 8th, I'm sorry, anytime.
Anytime. So 3, you want to do a 3 o'clock, DeeDee? Does that work for you?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Diana, is that...
Council, no, I'm not here on the 8th.
You're not here on the 8th. When are you leaving, Caitlin?
On the 8th.
On the 8th.
So the 7th?
7th?
Yeah, 1 o'clock.
Can we do it a little later? Because I do have a commitment that morning, so I could do it like, is 3 o'clock? Is that okay?
Okay, 7th at 3.
Okay by me.
Is it okay, Mary Ann, with you and DeeDee?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, DeeDee, 2 minutes.
If I, I'd just like to see Lynn go through legislative impacting municipalities at the next meeting, if we could. If I can get a consensus for that, and then DeeDee, you can jump in and I'll finish. Okay, so you got a consensus on that, Caitlin. DeeDee, go ahead.
Yeah, regarding the Planning and Zoning Board reviewing the applications, because we rescinded the zoning in progress, and they're going to be using the preponderance language that they have said that they don't feel comfortable, or I'm paraphrasing, so don't quote me on it, but words like untenable and unable to apply subjective criteria, I want to make a motion to review, revert to staff review for the approval or denial of new single-family applications so that planning and zoning doesn't have to do it.
I agree with that.
So DeeDee, what you want to do is, Lynn, can you wrap that up first? She wants to eliminate planning and zoning from doing it, take it back to staff, but you can't because it's harmony and you have the appearance review.